Yeah. We're just sent to the.
Oh.
They're not far.
Yeah.
Hi, Tonya.
Check, check.
All right, let's try.
Macy, this is Chris Larson. Can you hear me?
Better?
This is Chris, can you guys come in here? This is Chris, can anyone hear? Hello? Hello?
Violence reduction strategies that law enforcement have available to them. We're part of the International Violence Prevention Center.
Thank you. I can't hear, oh, here we go.
Check, check.
All right, guys, trying again, sounds better.
Can you hear me?
Tanya, we are trying to make sure you guys can hear us from in the room. Please confirm.
I hear you fine.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Hello, everyone, welcome to the November nineteenth, twenty twenty four B O T meeting, open part of the B O T meeting. We just got out of executive session, no decisions were made. And so.
Billy, this is. Go ahead. This is Chris Larson, it looks like lobby is still active, people are being admitted to the lobby and then have to be admitted to the meeting as our way to turn that off so that people joining can just automatically join.
John is working on that. Thank you for telling us that.
Yeah.
Sorry, folks, we're just making sure, there's a lot of folks attending in this meeting, we're just trying to get them in. How's that look, John? Can I get, okay, I'll get started, it seems like you can keep doing that. So it's seven oh four on my watch, and I will go ahead and get started with the open meeting. The first thing on the meeting tonight is the consent agenda, which is, I think, pretty light this evening with just minutes. Any clarifying questions or corrections or anything?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
Macy?
Mayor Pro Tim Sterling? Yes. Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Maris?
Yes.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yeah.
And trustee Miller?
Yep.
Thank you, the motion's approved.
Thanks, everybody. With that, we'll go into staff reports, John.
Mayor and board, you have my staff report as well as the ones from the other staff members. One note, I've been playing with a little matrix for the strategic goals of the town, and just trying to keep it short and just looking for a little feedback on that on mine. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
What questions do we have for John tonight? Okay, um, so there are all of our department heads and different folks on our town staff have reports here. Are there any questions, clarifying questions or anything for the reports? From the B O T or anything that folks from town staff want to update more to us? All righty, well, that will move into B O T reports. I want to commend Mayor Pro Tim Sterling, trustees Corvalan and Maris for completing them, I apologize, I did not, so we will work on doing that, my verbal report is I've mostly been doing stuff related to Eldora this month. And it was awesome, the Thanksgiving potluck was really fun in here and on Sunday, so. That's my update. Any other verbal reports from?
Mine is, we talked about potential new spots for E V chargers. Potentially getting rid of the electric Subaru because there are literally only two people signed up for it. The car chair, thank you. And that was really it.
And so getting rid of the Subaru?
Yeah, because.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it's just, it's like two people signed up for it and neither of them use it, and apparently it's a super, it can be kind of complicated signing up for it. Some people have signed up for it and not received their F A B. Other situations like that.
Trustee Ty, the other thing for SAB that might be good for the board to know, there is an alternate opening and we'd like to publish that position. You know, the approval of the board.
Right, thank you.
Oh, with this ad?
Okay.
So if I can just talk about that for a second. We have that vacancy on SAB is an alternate vacancy. So we have received, people are submitting applications for it, and we're not currently open for applications. So I would like to open them up. And while we do that, the B Z A also has an opening for their alternate position, so I figured we could open it for both. Looking into it. I was looking at opening it on December second, Monday, and closing it on Monday, December twenty third. Or potentially opening it, opening it on December sixth, Friday, and closing it on Monday, December twenty seventh, it has to be open for twenty one days. My concerns are the holiday. But if we pushed it, it would be in twenty twenty five potentially. So what are your feelings about the timeline?
Did SAB or the B Z A have any feelings?
We, I just talked about this with John today because we have been receiving these applications.
Okay.
So no, this is very preliminary discussion.
I think for SAB, the key role is filling that position so that they don't have issues with quorum. And I think that would be helpful, so I think they would like to find the person.
Okay.
So maybe the earliest from December second to the twenty third.
Got it.
That's good because it's between holidays too, so.
Correct, right before, yeah, okay. So my next question, and then I'm done. We have received one application and I've got interest from two other parties, so when we open this up on December second, do you want me to include the application we've already received? Or would you like that person to resubmit so that their application is received within the timeline?
Just include it.
There's enough paperwork in this world.
Thank you.
Thanks. Any other reports, trustee Larson, trustee Miller?
This is Larson, B Z A hasn't met still in months. But there is actually a Boulder Consortium of Cities meeting on the fourth, so hopefully the next time we have a reports, I will actually have something to write about.
Thanks, Chris.
I did, a really good update. Check, check.
Yep.
Yeah, a really good update on the Pro Sub front is our new Pro Sub alternate is a fantastic candidate. Glad to have her on board and Sam Ovitt has done a great job partnering with Boulder County and the Forest Service to expand our outdoor recreation partnerships with those other agencies since they're woven into town so much, so that's hopefully some really interesting things coming in the next year with that.
Awesome, thank you.
Thanks, Luke. Any questions or comments on the B O T reports? Trustee reports? If not, we will go into our first, first discussion item of the evening. Eldora Mountain Resort purchase. I'll do a quick review of the aim. And and I'll have a quick discussion and any clarifying questions and then we'll let a public comment, so. The town of Nederland is known now since last Thursday's Mountaineer article by Christopher Keller Kelly that we're pursuing the acquisition of Eldora Ski Mountain Resort, Eldora Mountain Resort. We've been working on this really since August, since the day it was announced it was going to be for sale. And we just made it public recently. Financial considerations, we are exploring next steps to build a team and build the capital to purchase the resort. It's still unknown what any potential deal may look like. Any progress will be brought to the board and really surely thereafter the public for consideration. And then the questions before the board are, what are your questions, comments and directions on next steps? And I will I'll stop there and kind of let John add if he wants to, and then there's some things I'd say before public comment.
Well, mayor and board of trustees, this is a project that is a big one. And I think that one of the things that's important about it is how closely tied Nederland and Eldora are. You know, I think we have a really inextricable relationship with the environment around us, and I think sustainability and resiliency, both of our community and of the environment have been goals of Nederland for longer than I've been alive. So when this opportunity came up, I think it was really important for us to think about it seriously, and I'm really glad that it was brought forward and that we had an opportunity to work on it, and I'm really grateful that I've had the opportunity to work with all of you on this project. In the article that came out on Thursday, and there's been several since, we've talked about the fact that the important thing here is to put the community first in this conversation, and that was one of the reasons that we had that article come out in a local paper on Thursday so that we could make sure people heard about it and had an opportunity to talk. I think that's been happening, we've seen a pretty robust conversation in social media, you've had some robust public comment here tonight. And one of the things that we'd like to do is track these issues through a process called context sensitive solution, so basically we want to identify the issues that are addressed by the community, and we want to make sure that we're identifying measures of success for those same questions so that everybody knows where we're going and where we're walking this whole path. I want to make sure people know that I'm available, my email is townadmin@netherlandco.org. Happy to talk with anybody, I am happy to drink coffee with anybody, whatever it takes, wherever you are, I'd like to meet with you and talk with you on those things. I know there are several questions about this, I'm happy to answer them from you all. If you have them for me now, I'd be more than happy to take them.
Yeah, so part of this being a discussion item is we'll have a little bit of board discussion or things that we might say and then also turn it over to public comment, and I think one of the questions that I know that we're getting is, why would Eldora, why would Powder Court be selling this? And I think that there has been some public articles about this, if you want to speak to that.
Sure, so I think that what we have seen them say publicly is that they're investing in different types of recreational opportunities. I think that they've done a really good job investing in that mountain and building the programs. The Ignite Center, if you haven't been there yet, is beautiful, it's going to create a whole new experience for adaptive sports in Colorado and a whole new learning experience on that mountain. They have invested in new infrastructure with lifts, there's always work to do, but they've been investing in their their infrastructure they use to make snow, all of those kinds of things. I don't think, I think that's pretty much the extent of what we know about that. About why they're kind of divesting in that, as for why we'd buy it, I think there's a pretty clear relationship between Nederland and Eldora. We've been really contemplating our budget over the last, since I've been here, kind of the last five months. And one of the things we know is that we really want to build a resilient budget that allows us to make sure this community stays a place where people can live and work and play. And I think that this opportunity, if we're able to fund it in a way that is responsible for town assets and really focuses on some of the partnerships that we could have at the grant level and things like that, could allow us to reinvest in some of the infrastructure that we've been talking about, that could be sidewalks, it could be our parks in town. It could be roads, it could be a new street sweeper for Josh over here, so he could have some new things to keep things looking nice and tidy. It could be water and wastewater infrastructure for Andrew or for Nikki, just to make sure we're taking care of parks appropriately. We think that this partnership is something that is, is pretty good idea from that purpose, like it's something that, that we already do well. Net or Eldora is run by people from Netherlands, and I think, you know, if we lean on the expertise of our community, that's a good, a good win for our community.
Yeah, and part of the other, the public that we've heard, or at least public acknowledgement from why they're selling Eldora is they're trying to, you know.
They're divert, they're really diversifying what they do for a living, so they're getting in. You know, and the president general manager of the Eldora put out an article about this, but they're getting into national park concessionaire business, which from what I'm, from what they had said is, you know, potentially stands to be lower risk and higher profit, so seems pretty smart. And likely not quite as tied to other concerns like climate change, et cetera. So they, they're keeping, my understanding is they're keeping their, their big ski areas, Copper Mountain, I think they own Snowbird, just because they make so much from those and but downsizing and keeping Woodward, I think, too, and but then downsizing otherwise in the ski industry so they can put more of their focus on the national park concessionaire, I think they've already got a couple of national parks that they won the bids on, so.
And then going back to the budget, I think that's something that's really important that the public hears from us, it's like, we're already, these last few months have been very heavy budget focused. Rita's been doing an incredible job saying, these are your trade offs. And so we're going into this budget season and future budget seasons, knowing that we have to continue to build resiliency into that budget irregardless of what happens with Eldora. While there are many opportunities, we can't always bet that that's a sure thing, right? And so we have to continue to build that resiliency into our budget now. So that's just another little point to make. In terms of other frequently asked questions we've been getting recently.
Why don't we, the money that we talk about raising, you know, why don't we put that into roads? Or, you know, water and sewer infrastructure, et cetera.
John, what can you tell about those?
The town does have a lot of capital projects that needs to be engaged in. In our current budget, I think what you'll see as we talk later tonight is that we have a a problem on the revenue side of our budget. We have cut expenditures in this town over the last several years to the level that I am honestly just amazed at our staff's ability to run some of the programs they've been running, they have done an awesome job. And I think that when we look at the way that we, we have been able, you know, Spring Street is a perfect example. Josh figured out a way to get that paved this, this last fall, which solved a major problem in town. Andrew has been doing a lot with a little for a long time, as has Nikki and has the rest of our staff. But we have this issue on the revenue side, your costs are increasing, we would really love our employees to live close and be able to, you know, live here and work here and things like that. And that's been, that's been a little bit of a challenge for us. And I think that when we look at what we're talking about with Eldora, we're talking about totally different money. We're talking about being able to build a recreational resource that would be a source of funding for the town to do things like invest more in roads and buy a street sweeper and, and build better gutters and things like that, all the different things that we talk about sidewalks downtown. Ways to make sure that people can safely get to the elementary school. These are all things that are possible with a slightly more on the revenue side where we can do more than just the bare minimum things. And I think that that's why this is something that the town should consider, if we can get the support we need to build this or to build this partnership or whatever it ends up being, we're going to be able to do more of the things that need to get done from a capital perspective around the town.
But the, and the reality is, is that, you know, a grant that we might secure to purchase Eldora, we can't turn around and just use that on streets or sewer or, you know, other infrastructure.
We're well positioned as a municipality to access some funding resources that aren't necessarily available through other means. And if we're able to bring that to the table, I think we can, that would be our, that would be both what we bring as a power and also something that, you know, like you said, they can't be used for other purposes.
Yeah.
But that revenue that we do, we could potentially generate from something like this could be used for other purposes, and I think that's the other important point there.
And I think the other thing to point out for the public and for everyone is that, you know, we've already been talking about some of these strategies, the capital improvements that need to happen in, you know, both Andrew and Josh's departments and Nikki's departments, like those things we are moving forward on. Pulling in reserves where we need to in order to make sure that those capital improvements get done. So those things are still, and, you know, again, Josh, you know, I've been, I've been saying that you haven't been here, but this, this whole, you know, the whole streets this summer, I mean, people are recognizing it as awesome. Like, we're, you know, we can drive over it and over the roads and it's not, you know, kind of a, so it's like those improvements we have to make incrementally anyway. And, but we can't, a lot of the funds that are available to us, we can't just like, we just can't shift it over here and say, oh, you know what, we got this amount of money, let's just use it over here instead, it's, that's just not how these buckets of, of money work. Other frequently asked questions before we go to public comment, Luke, you got one?
Well, just kind of a general thing about, you know, the resources we have in Netherlands, you know, we have, I think, a fantastic community here who has a ton of knowledge and a ton of experience in the outdoor industry, and the town is in a unique position to pull in a lot of those resources and leverage the, the knowledge and experience that exists in town. So I think that's kind of one of the, it may be addressing some of the concerns about can, does town have the experience, knowledge, resources to operate something like this, and I think that is we actually have a ton of resources.
Mm hmm, and a ton of experience in both merger and acquisition.
Yeah.
Hundred million dollar transactions, some of, you know, and then, and then, like you said, also within the outdoor arena.
Yeah, I mean, the community here has, you know, we have some really great people here, so that actually really excited.
Including the present management of Eldora.
Exactly, yeah.
I have a question that I've been asked.
Yes.
Have you seen the profit loss for Eldora for the past five years or so? To know, you know, how there, you know, the expenses that are incurred and the income, et cetera, from Eldora, not just Powder.
That would require us entering into an N D A with the company. And the important thing here is that this is a community driven decision, and so the important part was putting the community engagement first. That's why we wanted to bring this story out on Thursday so that the community could have a robust conversation about that. If we determine that this is the path forward, the next step would be to look at that process of getting into an N D A so we could do that financial analysis. As your town administrator, I would recommend that if we do that, there are people who are essentially fiduciary consultants that work in this space and we, we, we have our attorney and people like that that we could really lean into so that we can make sure that we have a robust financial analysis of what we would be looking at. But that's really, that would be kind of like a next step, once we determine that this is a plausible path forward for the town.
Okay, so we don't actually know if Eldora's been profitable or not, but we know that it's an asset to our community.
We believe so, and I think that that question would be one of the ones that we just didn't want to put the cart before the horse here, I think if we had entered an N D A, it looks more like we're making a decision outside of this public sphere that we're in, and so we really wanted to make sure that this came from from kind of the ground level so that we're doing things with everybody involved appropriately.
And, yeah, and the other thing I would add to that, Tanya, is that any point where if this does not look like it's in the best interests of the community, we're, we're more than willing to say sorry, right? But we're in it at this point because of what we've learned, it looks like it's a worthwhile endeavor to pursue, but at any point, we can say no.
Yeah, I mean, it's worthwhile from a community standpoint, a hundred percent regardless, but we also needed to help finance our, what we were just saying, streets, sewer, et cetera, so that'd be great, thank you.
Mm hmm. Any other questions we're getting?
Okay, thank you, and actually I'll just, I'll hit one. Someone had made mention something about water, water rights. We are completely, you know, on track with our own journey on water rights that we were on long before this ski area went up for sale, so this merger has nothing to do with that, and frankly, we don't need the ski area for sake of the work we're doing. So water rights is not part of this consideration at all. And at this point, just to be clear, if people bring it up on public comment, we are still inactive, we are still in Water Court. And Eldora Mountain Resort is also still in Water Court, we're all, you know, we are working on our diligence for storage and so while we're in Water Court, we can't comment on it, so folks have questions or or comments about water, just realize at this point, we can't really talk about it, and we should be out of court hopefully in twenty twenty five, and at that point, we'll be able to really talk a lot about what we're doing with water.
One more question, just because it has come up, is where we think that potentially some of this funding can come from in our frequently asked questions, we've talked about coalitions with private partners, also grants, again, kind of what we have access to that perhaps a private entity cannot. And so those are, those are primarily the sources that we would do, because the question is also, you know, would we take debt? Or, you know, our objective would be that's not our first choice, and yet some of the, just the, the vehicles that are available to us as a government entity are much different than what's even at the, the private sector, so we'll, we'll consider everything, everything could be an option.
Any more clarifying questions or comments that you want the public to hear before they for public comment, okay. So that will open up the public comment, I guess I will make one little statement about that, we're going to have public comments, we'll keep it to three minutes per comment. And you're welcome to ask questions, we will likely just compile the questions, we probably won't answer a lot here, but there may be some, we may have clarifying questions on what you're saying, so we may ask you, but for a lot of things, we you know, if it's something that's kind of super straightforward and and already in our F A Qs, we may just give you the quick answer, but otherwise, we'll compile these questions and also refer you to the F A Qs we have already put together. John, anything else you want to add on that before?
We will, just as a note, the F A Q document that's live, the intention is to keep updating it, and we're tracking all of these comments, so that's something that staff will be working on in the coming days here.
Great, thank you, well, that will open up the public comment, we'll start with folks in the room, if you have any public comment on on Netherlands pursuit of the acquisition of Eldora, now's the time, you just walk up to that podium and there's a little microphone there. Anyone here, interested? Comments? That little mic with the black felt on the top, just push the little L E D, there's a little button. The L E D green light comes on, now you can talk.
Great, thanks, I'm Nathan Schultz, I submitted some comments, written comments, so I'll keep this brief. I've lived in, in Netherlands and Boulder since nineteen seventy nine. Founder of Boulder Nordic Sport, and I've served on the Boulder Nordic Club Board for over twenty years. I'm also a partner in Tin Shed Sports here in Netherlands, so I've been around the ski area, I've been around the community for, for many years and kind of deeply involved. I'll make a long story short, and you can read my written comments if you want, but I think I'm, I'm here to urge the town to move forward, I think this is a great opportunity for the town, for the community. And also express support from the Nordic community specifically. I think we, we see. I think we, we see the new ownership at Eldora as a good opportunity for the community, for the cross-country ski community and for the, the region. And, and having a, somebody who's pursuing the ownership and pursuing the, the community needs and goals. I think it's a, it's a strong, strong process and would be a really unique opportunity to transform Eldora into a great community resource. So thanks for your time.
Thanks, Nathan. Anyone else in the room have a comment you'd like to make?
Hi, Billy. I'm Josh. Some of y'all know me. I've been here about seven years. Seems like a pretty good project. It definitely is interesting and certainly sounds like it's worth looking further into it and seeing if it's a good opportunity. One thing I'm curious about, I did see something mentioned at one point about maybe doing some summer kind of stuff. Has anybody, as I understand it, the front side is like owned by the Toll family, I think. Has anybody been in communication about the possibilities? Cause I seem to recall that was sort of a sticking point in the past. So I don't know if anybody's been in contact or started having those conversations, but yeah.
You could, you could, I think this.
We are really early in this process. I think that what we want to do is build a coalition of folks so that this is a community-driven project. And people, like you mentioned, are important in this conversation. So I know that's not a perfect answer, but I think that in the next step, what we would want to do is build this engagement process. There's other larger parcels of private land around there too, and we would want to be good partners to all of them.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thanks, Josh.
Josh, what's your last name?
Stanfield, sorry.
Stanfield? Okay. And then just for everyone making public comment, if you can list your first name, last name, and then a relationship to town, whether you're a resident in Netherlands or somewhere else.
Yeah. And I live across the street.
Thank you. Thank you, Josh.
Neighbor. Thanks, Josh. Any other folks in the room would like to make a comment?
Don't be shy. All right. We got another taker.
The green light's already on. I'm Paul Wilburn. I, I live in Boulder. And I'm, I'm here, these comments are my own. I am on the board of Boulder Nordic Club, BNC. You know, I think this is, this is in the written comments somewhere. The board has not convened yet, you know, to make an official statement. These are just my own comments. I showed up here. It's, you know, a lot of, you know, most of them are, you know, in line with what Nathan was saying. I like Nordic skiing. Great opportunity. And, you know, especially at the time when, you know, Talland is, is up for, you know, a conversation, right? Where we could all come together. You know, you ask any, any Nordic skier, you know, most of us will have, you know, very, very clear and not very many, you know, ideas for, for what, you know, Eldora could, could be doing, right? For specifically for, for the Nordic community. But we, we all have ideas. No, this, this is really great. My really naive comment and slash question is, you know, what could be, what, what is the vision for this? For, for Eldora/Netherlands? Because there is, there is Winter Park, right? That's owned by Denver and run by Altera. Isn't it going to be something similar? You know, and if it is, does that mean that is going to turn into, you know, Winter Park with, you know, like a nice little Gucci shop, you know?
We're going to just put a kibosh on that one right now.
Yes or no?
That's not, that's not the vision.
Somewhere, somewhere in the middle is just, I, I, you know, I'm curious. I'm curious about that. But I think, you know, aside from that, I think we're all really excited that's, you know, finally, right? For the first time, Talland's up for, for sale for the first time, what, 100 years, right? That, you know, once in, you know, many generations, this is like an opportunity to actually, for everyone to, to be heard. So, great. Thank you.
Thank you. What was your first name again?
Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Paul Wilburn in Boulder.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul.
Thanks for coming up.
I think that, actually, thank you for your question. I think that can give us a little bit of an opportunity to talk about potentially what this vision looks like. Because we know Netherlands is not a winter park. We're quirky. We like buildings that are misshapen and yet, right? We know that we need to, in some respects, modernize, right? And, and the how is always, that's, that's always the question, right? Do we want three-story buildings or do we want two? And do we want them to look Western? And that's, a lot of that's coming out in our comprehensive plan. But when we started to really pool together and talk about this, it was, you know what people cry about in Netherlands? Just the loss of a local's feel. Sad. I've had so many conversations about that. And locals meaning not just like our Netherlands, but our, kind of our front range, you know, you know, cousins and everyone. But just to, but just to go and feel like it's a, a green, sustainable, locals-first, family, you know, type of, of, of feel. It's, it's not loss on anyone, how high these, these prices, the tickets are, like the, to be able to, an annual pass or whatnot. And that's something that we'd like to attack. That's something that we'd like to do something about. And I'll open it up to other folks in terms of what that vision might be.
Well, I've heard since I've been here, we need to keep Netherlands, Netherlands.
Yeah.
I think that's really important. And I think sometimes it's a really qualitative statement. But I think at the end of the day, we have the opportunity to have a local ski hill that's just a different place. And to keep our town what it is that people love and keep these spaces around us that people love. And that's why I think this is a shot we're taking, because it does keep those things that are so important to us. I can't tell you how many times I've heard people since this story came out, just tell me that this struck a nerve with them because it is doing something different and creating a different skiing experience. That hearkens back to what it was, you know, in years past and places past. And I think like what you have raised on these adjoining properties, we have opportunities there too. We have opportunities to look at, maybe there's opportunities to partner with the Forest Service on the Hesse Trailhead. Maybe there's opportunities to do other things. You know, we don't know yet. And I think that's part of the journey here that we need to interrogate. There's no model in place yet. I think what we're trying to do, like I said, is put this community engagement first and put the love that this community has for this community and its history and its future first. And I think ultimately, if we do that, these decisions will come together in a way that's really consensus building around what we're doing and, and really create a bright version. Cause I think the other piece of Eldora is taking care of the people who work there.
100%.
I was a ski bum kid in my twenties and I taught ski school at Loveland, so not at Eldora. But, you know, we could do that and we could live close by and we could make that work. I don't know that that is as easy as it used to be. And maybe we can really work on this partnership between our town and work on some of our affordable housing goals. So it supports those folks and our transportation goals and our, our other goals that we have to just build a sustainable community with community assets so that you can live here and you can work here and you can go to the doctor here and all of those things. And I think this might be just a piece of that equation that's really important.
Yeah, I agree. And Paul, yeah, my whole shtick, my whole platform running for mayor last two plus years has been to not have Netherlands turn into a Breckenridge or a Winter Park or pretty much every other town you can name in Colorado. So definitely lean more towards the local. I mean, really the goal is, is to stabilize hopefully both, you know? The town definitely has its financial, you know, situation. And so having, you know, doing things to build our economy here in a way that helps the town is something that's good for the town. And the ski area, you know, I used to work in ski area up at Winter Park actually for, for years, years ago. And just being able, make it a more sustainable place to work and a place that can keep employees coming back or keep them year-round, depending on the jobs. Making that a more a part of the community and using the resources between the two to help make this a place where more people who've lived here for a long time can continue to live and thrive and not just have to move because it gets too expensive or they don't have options here. So our thoughts are that this is frankly, you know, what allows us to have Netherlands, stay Netherlands. And have some, and also some of the things people want, like just water infrastructure and, and roads, sidewalks, you know, some of that as well. But thanks. Any other public comments from folks in the room?
My name is Maggie Malhearn. I'm a resident of Netherlands as of the ninth.
Oh, welcome.
Thank you.
My goodness.
I'm very excited about the potential acquisition. I grew up skiing in Vermont and there are a lot of dinky-dink little towns that are outskirts of, well, mountains that are outgrowths of the town and they're great community centers. And I think it's something that's missing in Colorado. I'm wondering if you guys, and I know that you might not have ironed this out yet, have figured out how to deal with private investors and their interest in making their investment back and balancing that against the town's goals in more like sustainable growth and more community-oriented growth.
Yeah. Can I take a first go at it?
Yeah.
One of the things that's really important for whoever we partner with, and you can be rest assured that this is something we'll be looking out for, is how aligned are their values with ours? Like are they, how are they thinking? Are they thinking this is a community-first, locals, you know, centered type of mountain? Do they, do they love Netherlands, right? Do they, do they understand the quirkiness and the fact that we need to sort of evolve just a little bit, right? And so that's kind of the first thing. That's kind of the gate that we're looking for. Because if we can find folks that are aligned with that value set, we can work through the rest of it, right? And so, you know, the fact that we are a public-facing or that we're a government entity, we can, we do, like we were talking about before, we have the ability to secure financing that other private entities can't. And the private sector is going to want that. They're going to want, they're going to want to partner with us because we can do that. And so, but the values have to be there. And if the values aren't there, we're willing to say sorry. Next. I think that's a song. Ariana Grande?
Thank you. Next.
Yeah. Oh, thank you. Next. Okay. Sorry.
Thanks, Maggie.
I'm not that hip, so.
Any other comments from folks in the room?
Hello. My name's Randy Martz. I live up on Ridge Road, so I'm not in the town of Ned. But lived here for about 40 years. And I just, I just want to say that Netherlands is a unique place. As, you know, I lived in Breckenridge years ago and total zoo when you walk into the town, you know? And then I have a lot of friends that are still up there. And it's still a pretty cool community as it is. I'll probably just ramble on here for a little bit. But I've, Netherlands is unique in that it has a ski area, but it's not a ski town. You know, it's a really kind of a pass-through town for a lot of things. I mean, over the years, it's really, you know, you come down here on a weekend and, you know, there's a lot of people here coming, like to hang out. I have no idea on ski area management, ski, except that they do a fantastic job at Eldora. Their snowmaking is second to none, I think. Last couple of years, shoot, we've been opening before the higher areas, Loveland and A-Basin. And, you know, I, I don't know the profitability. It's a smaller, you know, it's a smaller area compared to Brack, Vale, Keystone, all those. But it really has a, a lot of influx, you know, the University of Colorado. You know, people in Broome Field and Longmont. And I mean, they really use it. It's kind of an area where you can come up and ski for two hours, three hours. You know, I know a lot of students, you know, hey, I got a break. Boom. They come up and they're skiing. So it's in and out. And then, you know, weekends, it's a, well, you guys know, you're in town and, and, you know, the, you got one road across the bridge and, and you got a walkway there that slows it down. So things can get pretty backed up as, when the fall colors also come, you know? And I don't know, it's, it seemed like it would be a good, a good match for Netherlands to be part of it. And, you know, it's just my feeling after being up here and being a skier and, you know, and I would like to see, you know, like you guys talk about summer activities and stuff. It would really be nice to have some cool biking up there. You know, I think they've done a fantastic job of, of, you know, getting West Mag and the trails up there. I mean, it's a real draw for a lot of people to come up and ride that stuff. It's really awesome. So anyway, that's just my, my take on it after being here for 40 years and being a skier. And I just thought I'd comment on it.
Thank you. Is it Randy?
Thanks.
Thank you, Randy. Thanks a bunch. Any more comments from folks in the room? If not, we will go online and I see a couple of hands raised. So I'll just start with the first one I see was just Teresa Robertson. Go ahead and make your comment. I can't hear you if you're talking. Hey, well, we'll go, we'll go, Teresa? We'll go to Christina. Teresa just speak up later. Christina, your, your hand is up too. You can go ahead and make your comment. Thank you.
Yeah. Hi. I'm Christina Davis. I'm a resident. I absolutely think that it's worth pursuing and going forward. And I also appreciate the board's desire to get community input. Going forward though, what type of community input would we be able to have for, for where revenue goes? Is, is that something that would be open to public comment periods during other town meetings?
Christina, can I repeat your question? Was that what would happen with the revenue that's generated from the ski area?
Like would community have input on it?
Oh.
Yeah.
Do you want me to?
Yeah, please, John.
Okay. So most likely what would happen if this does move forward is we would probably have something called an enterprise fund, which is a fund that works more like a business. And I think that the truth of the matter is, is it would be the best to have, you know, we would want professionals running the mountain. That's the thing. And there already are professionals running the mountain. As far as where money could come into the town, I think that that's a conversation the board would have at a future meeting when we're more, when we have a greater understanding of what actually is happening. And I believe that that would be, they probably would start with that. You know, there's going to be parts of this conversation that are in executive session just as it's subject to property negotiations and things like that. But I think over time, that would be something that there would be a community conversation about. But likely what would happen is it would be coming into the general fund. Money can come out of an enterprise fund to support other, other things essentially.
And, and just to add, so our current process, like what we have today, Christina, is, I mean, for, you know, folks who are really interested, this has been budget season and all community folks are welcome to comment. We have a budget hearing coming up and like that's how we get the public comment in terms of how our funds are being spent. And so that process itself will never, it won't change. It's, it's per statute, we can't change it. And so that will always be a, a process. If I think maybe part of the question is potentially like, will there be like a community board or like a citizen board or something like that, that could potentially help advise on where funds go? At this point, we're, like John said, it's a community discussion and we're open to anything. And so, but we want to see how things evolve. Did that help answer your question, Christina?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Christina. Teresa, are you? Your hand's up. Oh, your hand's down. Okay. Christopher? Christopher, your hand is up if you want to talk. Thank you.
Good, everyone. Really appreciate the opportunity and. Really appreciate the opportunity and your interest in looking to, you know, make this move for the town. You know, this is just kind of a reference of, you know, where I'm at and where my family is at. We've been living in this area, the greater area now for probably six years and just recently moved into town and have plans to stay living in the town of Nederland for, you know, an extended period. And part of that for us, and our excitement for that, is because of Eldora. You know, we love the town, we love the area. Certainly, we wouldn't do this just because of Eldora, but Eldora plays a factor in our thinking about this. And just want to say that the idea that you are exploring excites us, it excites our family. The kids put on their skis and played in the snow in the yard tonight. And so, you know, we're excited to go up to Eldora and ski a lot this year, cross-country, downhill. I'll probably do the, you know, the skinning events. You know, so for us, as a, as a young family, we have a six-year-old daughter and a three-year-old who's soon to be a four-year-old son. The existence of Eldora and its success and potentially its connection to the town, you know, all weighs as a factor in, you know, how we see spending our lives and spending our time and, and spending our money in this area. And so I just want to say that we and my family find what you're doing exciting and are here to support and be, you know, community members to support what, what you all are pursuing.
Thanks, Christopher. Appreciate it.
You bet.
Any other public comments from folks online? Presently, I don't see any hands raised, but if you have something you want to say, just unmute yourself and let us know. All right. Any more public comments from folks online? We can't hear you if you're talking, but raise your hand or, or start, start commenting. Okay, hearing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. There are no real nods afore needed here. We, you know, the question before the board was just a question we've been asking ourselves for a little while here, which is, what are our own questions, comments, and directions? So, any more comments from the board?
I just want to thank everyone's public comments. It sounds like, ironically, for all the things that we have at the BOT, this is one of the things that I feel like we have support around.
Everyone's in agreement.
I'm just saying.
It's crazy.
It's like, of all the emails that we get and all the names we get called, it's like we finally maybe hit on something here. And so, and, and we recognize you still have questions and we, you still want answers. And so, like John had mentioned, please rest assured, we're working on a frequently asked questions 2.0, based off, you know, Facebook questions, based off the questions here tonight, and we will get those out as soon as we can. John, were you going to say something?
Yeah, one last thing. It can be uncomfortable to give public comment, and I want people to feel free to contact me, or there is a, what we call the BOT Distro, which is an email that emails the whole board. And that's available on our website, or people can contact our staff at Town Hall and we will direct you how to do that. But don't feel like you shouldn't say what you have to say just because you didn't say it this evening. And I just want to make sure that everyone understands that that opportunity is still there.
More comments from trustees? Thanks, John.
Yeah, any other comments?
Yeah, so I wanted to just kind of expand a little bit on some of the Nordic comments. I think that's an area where, there's two areas where I think part of what we can do to reassure our public and that there's a lot of creative solutions around what happens with Eldora. One is summer operations, which I think we all know, like that's a big thing where town has a lot to bring to the table and there's, there's a lot to, you know, do there. The other one I really want to expand on, the Nordic part, it's an area of Eldora that's been kind of under-resourced for the last many, many decades and where we have, you know, in the Boulder Nordicsport and the Boulder Nordic Club, a ton of resources and has the potential to be like world-class, right? And that's something that doesn't get addressed under the current ski area management. And I think that's a place where town has the opportunity to pull in resources and bring a lot of value into Eldora and a lot of value in our community. And that, just that bit of knowledge came from reaching out and talking to our local people. And so I really encourage everybody in the public who has ideas about how Eldora can grow and benefit, that people come and reach out and send us comments about it and send us your expertise. So that's where I think, you know, as we move forward in this process, like really encourage our local residents and experts to come forward.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. One of the public comments that we received was from Gavin Coombs, who's overseas, peak-to-peak endurance. A lot of the youth sports in this area had a lot of, you know, positive things and also support for it. And I think that it would be nice to get in touch with our Nordic folks that, because not just, it wasn't just from Nathan and Paul that we heard from you today, other folks have been talking about the Nordic piece of it. And so perhaps we can get, you know, either you guys send us your thoughts, get a quick meeting with John or something like that, just that we can understand what the potential is from your eyes. That would be really amazing.
Another one I think that we, nobody's reached out to yet, is Matt Tomosco and EMSC. Like that's another place where I think there's, you know, the racing, ski racing growth potential for Eldora, you know, with Sea Uski Team and, and EMSC. I mean, there's a huge opportunity there.
Nice.
More comments from trustees?
I'm just stoked. That's all I got. Bruh.
Cool, man. Cool.
Tanya and Chris, any, any comments?
Nope, just really happy to be hearing such support from the public. Let's do it.
Yes, tada.
No big deal.
Thanks.
Just buying a ski mountain. It's totally fine. Totally great.
It's a typical Tuesday night, come on.
We do this all the time.
Oh, actually something else, which I, I know that there's some information in FAQ, but I think something that we can convey a little bit more is, there's a lot of examples of this, of municipal town-owned ski areas and, and not just ski areas, other like large-scale recreational facilities. And I think that's something that...
That are owned by municipal governments.
Yeah, right. And, you know, something that we, both as a resource that we can draw on, but also, you know, like ways to reassure the public, like this is, this is something that can be done. So, and there's a lot of recipes for that, from public-private partnerships to town-operated completely, like there's a whole range of success stories out there.
And I think what's kind of neat in just some of our explorations that we've done is that the acquisition by a municipal government of a ski mountain has, it's been considered a public benefit. Like you think about all the other public benefits that we offer, such as, you know, water, sewer. This becomes recreational.
Water, sewer, skiing, you know, just the essentials.
That's our bumper sticker, water, sewer, skiing. But yeah, so, but it's, it becomes considered that, that public benefit that, you know, folks are just like craving for, that really great heartfelt locals' mountain that, you know, your family's going to grow up learning how to ski on. And a lot of our families are, and, and it's, and it's still a little out of reach for some folks. So we want that to come full center. Yeah, John, were you going to say something?
Just only that, Nederland, everything that makes Nederland great is when the people who live here color outside the lines. And that's what this is, is coloring outside the lines.
We have colored, yes, as a community. That is what we are now. Yeah, exactly. What lines? There are lines?
There's no more lines.
There's no more lines. All right.
So I just want to say thank you, everyone, for, for being here and whether you made public comments or not, we appreciate it, both, both in the room and online. And all comments are welcome. We know not everyone thinks this is a great idea and we want to hear from you as well. And just constructive is the most helpful, constructive feedback or even solution, you know, ideas, you know, whether you're for or against, or just in the middle trying to decide what you think. It's townadmin@netherlandco, for Colorado, dot org is John. Townadmin@netherlandco.org. And then BOT is BOT@netherlandco.org. But we appreciate all the comments everyone made. And just to be clear, you know, we are going to continue forward on this process with a full-court press, so. Thank you all.
So now the rest of it is like budget? And so if everyone wants to stay around?
Now, really gets exciting.
We're giving you the ability to leave, isn't in other words.
Run while you may.
They're scrambling for their coats.
Say thank you now. You're welcome. Thank you, next. Okay.
That said, you're welcome to stay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks for being here. So our, our second discussion item on tonight's agenda is the deficit-reducing budget alternatives. So we're going to discuss some ideas that we have to bring our budget to a better place.
Mayor and Board, we discussed a couple of grades that Rita and I could get on this budget if we got certain deficits to happen in our last meeting. And so we went back to the drawing board and really spent some time thinking about how this could happen. What is the least impactful to staff and operations? And how could we do this in a way that, that is beneficial to the community? And so what I tried to do, Rita's got a presentation, I'm going to, I'll pop it on the screen here in a second, but just going to sum up what I have in my aim. We came up with two alternatives for you. One doesn't quite meet the goal that we set. It's at $426,000 of a deficit. And the other alternative is $258,000. And really, the crux of the question comes down to the Boulder County Sheriff's contract. Do we want to have a 50% contract or do we want to have a 100% contract? Rita and I had some really extensive conversations about how we can make this work. And one of the things that we considered is, what if we doubled extra-duty shifts? Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that anything really, other than it means that deputies would be in town. So if we do go down to a 50% contract, it would, it would guarantee that we have, well, if the shifts are picked up.
What kind of extra-duty?
Actually, traffic extra-duty, so that we could have those people be here. So there would be people in town if there's a call, and they would answer calls in that case. The way the Boulder Sheriff Office does it is they prioritize calls. There's priority one through four. Priority one calls always get answered, but where we're going to be in a 50% coverage thing, where there might be issues if deputies are out of town, is on like the three and four priority calls. So that's one of the things, when we looked at doing that, that's where we get these two different deficits in large part. The other thing that we talked about doing that is something that is rather feasible is we have the Big Springs Egress Project. That was originally supposed to be done in June of next year, but we had, I had an initial conversation with FEMA. While we cannot guarantee it would be approved to get a year extension, it seems likely for us. And if that is true, then we could split the $146,000 in matching funds that we need to carry forward for that grant into two years, which further reduces the deficit $70,000. So that's how we have achieved where we are in our deficit right now. There was a couple of other things that came up that I just want to mention in this staff report, and you guys have all read it, but essentially the first one is, we talked to the DDA about potentially partnering with them on the visitor's center and park staffing. The options would be finding an alternative funding or staffing arrangement for the visitor's center to be determined exactly what that looks like. And then the second option would be park staffing, transitioning from two part-time positions to one full-time position. They expressed that they're open to both ideas. We've been talking about having a work session with the DDA, and that needs to happen. They want us to basically bring forward a more full-fledged proposal. But one of the things that is true is that if they're open to that and we can get across the finish line, even if that happens in April or May, we'd still achieve those same cost savings if it's like a 50% split or some other share. So while we're not quite there on that, I think it's a pretty good opportunity to further reduce costs. The second item in my staff report, I just wanted to mention, is that we end our support from, Miranda's been supporting the town on things that she has kind of bigger background knowledge for. Her contract ends in December. So we did just say here, like, the big thing she's doing is supporting two grants, and then she does have some relationships and understanding of like certain legal situations that are beneficial to the town to have her involved in. We currently end that support in December, but it could potentially continue for all or part of 2025 or on a, you know, on as-needed basis. So that, that could be something that we consider further. And then the other question was the Nederland Food Pantry. We currently anticipate raising their contribution to $9,000 annually instead of $7,500, which it's been. And that's just due to their rising costs that they've had this year. So we just need to make sure that we, we really firmly answer that question. In the budget presentation, we get into this a little bit more, but the really other big question is just for Nikki's staff person. She's really needs to get her person hired. There was some indication of support. We could talk about that a little bit further, but we just wanted to make sure we got good direction on that point. We, I also want to just explain something publicly before we go into the presentation. We needed to pause the budget process in our last meeting. It was important because of the situation we're facing. But there is a new, a kind of a changed rule, I guess, in Colorado, that budgets need to be approved by the 15th of December now, so that mill levies can be certified to the county. And there's, there's a bunch of stuff that happens in that space. And so what that means is, is that we will now, we're a week behind, but our next scheduled meeting that we could have the adoption at the end of this process was late by two days. That means that we do need to have a special meeting to approve the budget, and I think that that would be a virtual meeting with just one action item. Of course, it would be streamed on the town website and accessible like every other meeting, but that would occur on December 10th at 7:00 PM. So as far as next steps, what we have is we would hold a budget hearing on December 3rd. Macy's been working on all the notification processes for that. We would hold a special meeting on December 10th, and then we would certify our budget if approved on the 15th. The next step we also would have, if you guys decide to approve this idea of trying to push Big Springs, and what we would do in the Big Springs option is we would, we would probably, there's a desire to have two routes designed out of what we've looked at. So what we would likely do is bring forward the engagement process and design the highest priority route that comes out of that process. And then we would do that in 2025, and then in 2026, we would design a backup route. And so that's kind of how we would, we would, we would do that. The money from, that we have for that grant cannot be used for capital construction. It can only be used for planning purposes. That allows us to use the greatest extent of that money too and make sure we have good plans in the books for anything else that might come up. We've talked about having this work session with the NDDA. That seems likely to occur in January at this point. The, the next thing that I also want to bring up is next year, I hate to tell you this, but I'm going to take you right into the 2026 budget. So I'll be working with staff right away, but I will probably have our budget kickoff meeting in May. A lot of that will be me, because Rita's got a lot of early year things to do. But what we'll be talking about is timelines and process mostly. And then we'll be really carefully watching financial situation next year. There's reason to be optimistic about what may happen on the revenue side of the equation next year. But of course, we are going to take a conservative view of that, and Rita's done a really good job of building a conservative estimate on the revenue side. But, you know, I'm just telling you, I'm optimistic that we'll beat that number. So with that, I'm just going to go ahead and pull up the PowerPoint presentation that we prepared, and I'll let Rita take it, if you give me just a second here.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees, and members of the public. So I wanted to just say a couple of things. We have two scenarios in front of us. Is it better?
Yeah.
Okay. So anyway, we have two different scenarios here of the general fund. We have the 100% Boulder County contract and the 50%. The only difference between the two is the $168,000, which is the difference between the 100% versus the 50% contract. And both of these include double extra-duty traffic. Let's see. I did talk to Boulder County, and we do have flexibility as far as the extra-duty traffic schedule goes. In other words, we could let them know that, for example, we would want more extra-duty traffic during the summer month versus winter month. So that's good to know. So that's good to know. So in this, both of these, I did include the, let's see, the reduction of the Big Springs match. So I went from 146,000 to 73,000. It does include $9,000 for the food pantry. It does not include the Miranda match. And it does include the fourth employee for Nikki's Parks Department. That's all I have to say about the general fund at this time. Any questions? Or should I just move to the other two slides? And really, the sewer fund, basically just letting you know, we did discuss that last time we met. It was increased by 115,000 for adjustments made for the PIF revenue.
Sorry, just because we were on the 100%. So going back to the 50%, again, this include, this has Big Springs taken out.
Same as, yeah.
It's everything the same.
Everything is the same. The only difference is the $168,000.
Yeah.
Just the reduction on Big Springs.
Say that again.
Just the reduction.
One design throughout that.
One design, right. But it's one design in 2025 and the second one in 2026. And that's why it's split. And it's double.
Of extra-duty.
Of extra-duty.
On both of those.
On both of them.
Yes.
And no Miranda, but yes on food pantry, 9,000.
Correct.
Okay.
That is correct.
I thought you said it was Miranda, what did have Miranda in for?
Not yet.
No.
Oh, okay.
It also doesn't have the Nikki employee. Oh, it does have the Nikki employee. Sorry.
Yes.
Yeah. Yep. Okay. So just because I wanted to make sure we were all taking that in. Nikki employee, no Miranda, food pantry, 9,000, double extra-duty, split Big Springs.
Right. So really, the cut of 73,000 plus the reduction of the 168,000 go in 50% is really what the savings are here, where we're 257,000.
So logistically, we pushed that second route. Okay. Why do we need two routes?
I think that the fire model shows two things. And if we build a route, there's a need to have two routes out of that neighborhood, according to Netherland Fire. And so there's different possibilities. There's four different possibilities that are currently contemplated by the engineers. And I think the concern is, is depending on which way the fire comes, it could negate the route. And so that's why they would want to be like an east-moving route and potentially a south-moving route. And there is, there is alternatives that could do both of those things. And so what we were thinking is, if we could just push this out a little bit, it's going to take a little bit of design and engineering work anyway. And we do have a, not extensive, but we do have some community engagement work that needs to happen before we can really get there. And so if we finish the community engagement in 2025, get Route 1 designed, we can, we can get that reimbursement on the books and then carry forward only that extra $70,000. And that's the primary reason, is it splits the match requirement across the two years, so that we'd reimburse across two years, basically.
But then it pushes out any capital start, obviously.
I think we might be able to figure that out if we get the first route designed, but that's a good question that I can follow up on.
But we're talking about building the first route, getting the first route designed and hopefully started in 2025. The second route wouldn't, there's no way we would be able to start the second route.
Probably not, but I think.
Regardless, if we.
Probably not, even if we had to.
That's what I mean. Like, even if we budget for it, there's no way we're going to start.
We're probably looking at a fairly expensive project to build either route. So I think what we need to do is, we need to get a shovel-ready design, so we can get that to a grant funding agency. And I would like to apply, what most likely scenario is, if we can get the Route A, we'll call it, figured out, and where it's, we all have consensus on that, we need to do, get to a shovel-ready design that we can apply to a grant funder in, and that likely would be, it could be as early as May, but it may be August, potentially, by the time we get to the grant funding round, just on the work.
Of 2025.
Yeah.
Okay. So let me just reiterate that, make sure I'm tracking. First route, Route A, whatever that ended up being, I think we kind of have an idea of what that is, would go to be shovel-ready, and that would be done by, I think you had said, June of 2025.
I think it could be. There's, it really depends on the route that's selected, and we need to go through all the process with the different agencies. We've had all the agencies involved in the process, but we just need to understand what they're going to ask us to do. There's, and I'm not 100% sure exactly what that looks like, but the next stage of our engagement is ready to happen, and I think we could get to that point where we know quickly. But I don't think that where the level of design that the engineer has already had it at, it's at a, maybe a 30% design. And we just need to make sure we understand all the different factors that might influence that. And I think usually, it's only a few, well, depending on what happens, it's not long to get from 30% to shovel-ready. It could happen by summer.
But the idea being that we would go ahead and put that shovel-ready design in front of granters in 2025?
Yes. And the other thing I would do is, if we, if this is something the board wants to interrogate, I will directly ask FEMA the question about whether or not we can start on one design if we're still working on the grant. And that's something I can get some clarification on.
Yeah. That's, that would be super important, just because part of the reason why we were wanting this to be done shovel-ready even by the end of 2024, maybe early 2025, is because this is one of those 20- to 30-year-old projects that just, you know, hasn't been done.
It needs to finish.
And it's a safety issue. So that would be great if you could ask that.
Okay. The other thing is, is that in the case that they say no, we could also bring forward a supplemental budget that changes this fact, if we had the time to ask FEMA and just interrogate those issues. So that's something we could still do. And if that is the case, I do think, as long as we can figure out the budget for it, I think we could probably still finish both routes. One of the routes that is likely to be selected as feasible is not very difficult to design. So.
Yeah.
John, this is Tanya. Is there a lot of hope for the second route with the landowners writing us a letter from their lawyer stating that they're not interested in allowing the egress? It's no different than that driveway problem we had to get up on the ridge from before, where we got really stalled out from that for years, negotiating with those driveway people. And these people don't seem any different.
We're not at a level of design that I'm 100% positive which route would be selected, or like where the exit points of it might be. And there's opportunities to look at that. We would not want to, you know, we're trying to do this to maximize public good and to make sure that we're good neighbors and good stewards of the land and all those things. So I think that.
We're not going to get into deciding which route tonight.
But why, why hasn't JBA gotten even close to anything? They told us they'd have it all ready December 2024.
I have conceptual.
For the delays.
I have conceptual information for the routes that we discussed the other day. And the next step is to have a Big Springs community meeting. And that's kind of what we're, we're trying to figure out schedule-wise, and that's something that I will be, I need to, I need to get done.
Okay. Well, I'm in favor of your plan, so, for the record, of doing one at a time, and hoping that the easier route is the A route. And we haven't discussed which route is which, but.
Are we good?
Yep.
Okay. You want to move to the sewer fund, Joan?
Just a sec. Real quick on Miranda. So how much, what was the budget for her this year, and has she come close to spending it?
I don't know.
I want to say it was like between $4,000 and $5,000. And.
And she hasn't.
I don't believe.
She's not coming close. Okay.
We have really stepped back, but there's, the reason that it's useful to have her is because she just has a lifetime of knowledge about, and, you know, there's just been a lot. But as I've kind of grown in the role, like, questions have gone down. So it's really things like the ARPA programs that she's been running, the mental health and the volunteer driver. And then there have been some legal issues that she has been previously privy to that have been helpful, just to understand the context of certain situations.
Yeah. And it seems like, at least so far, how we're on track, that Miranda didn't blow her budget in 2024, so I don't imagine she wouldn't.
Yeah.
I mean, history serves. She wouldn't, she wouldn't next year.
Looks like maybe approximately $3,000 from what I can tell that we spent.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
I was just, on the general fund, the, you know, there's our breakdown of revenues and expenditures in 2024 versus 2025. And a lot of the, you know, the standout, you know, budgets, line items that had large increases between 2024 and 25, also had large increases in their revenue as well as their expenditures. I was wondering if there was a breakdown that showed just like the net, you know, like, for example, the planning, or, I think it's zoning and planning is that line. Yeah. Plant, planning and zoning, you know, had a large expenditure increase, but also had a large revenue increase.
One reason for that, we moved the Sustainability Coordinator into that department, so her salary, that's a grant revenue, too, so.
Well, that's what I was just saying. Is there something that like just has the net change, right? So we don't need to worry so much about, oh, this had a huge increase, but it also had a huge increase in spend in revenue. So like, is there a way to like?
So are you looking for like a detail of what that?
No. I'm just like, you know, so just using that one as an example. So it had a 47% increase in its, in its revenue and a 32% increase in its expenditures. So we have like a net change of, you know, 15% or whatever.
Oh, like it's all?
Yeah. So like, that's, that's the actual change in its, is that, am I making that question clear?
You're making it clear, but I'm not sure how I would show you differently, other than.
Just kind of doing, doing the math. Okay.
Right. And I guess, you know, I mean, maybe, and it's a good way to look at the different departments, right? But also, maybe the better way is overall, right? Total expenditures, total revenues.
Yeah. Just trying to like see what, you know, which things are really kind of.
And also the detail that I would send you, obviously, which we didn't do with this, because this is different. We'll have that again during our, you know, hearing. But that's where the detail information comes in handy, my notes that I put there. But I see what you're saying, but I guess, in my case, I just do the difference, you know, I look at it really quick, the percentage difference, and that's how I would know.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, like ones, you know, like the use tax has a big increase in revenue, but not such a big increase in spending.
I'm not seeing any use tax spending.
Oh, sorry. Oh, shoot. I was, I was lining up the wrong line items. Anyway.
I think the detail that will.
I can just kind of figure it out.
Yeah. The detail at the hearing, I think, will help. And you'll have that information. And so we also, the other thing, I guess, through this process, some feedback questions like what helps you, because we can look at how we could develop those for our next budget, too, and just make sure that we've got the information you need. But I think overall, the, the increases you see here, that's obviously the big one. The other one is, is that we had, you know, our planner has gotten significantly more educated and experienced, and we need to, we try to be very contextual about staff raises this year and be really careful about that. There is a COLA and merit raise for staff of a total of potentially 5% in there that we do have, except for everybody but Rita and myself. And then the people, also, I'll just pick on Josh, he's not getting one either, but he just, he just moved into a new position, so that's why. And he had a different structure. But that, that's kind of what we did, is we tried to make sure that we were taking, we used the study we had last year, make sure that everybody was kind of covered by it, but not every staff person got a raise like they did last year. So that's kind of why there are some increases in some of those line items. And then planning and zoning on the revenue side, now that we have Cass on board in there, she's also maintaining some of those sustainability grants or programs that we have, like for recycling and things like that. And the goal would be that we cover her position without grant funding through those, that was kind of, I think, the original goal of what those were intended for. So that's kind of what you see there. And then I think the really, the big, you had the use tax, that was bigger this year than we anticipated, I think. And then other than that, you know, the grant expenditures, that's a question I think that we should talk about next year, like how we're reporting the grants just in this general fund, so that looks like a big number, but those are really for capital projects in and out funds.
Right. And one more thing, this, as far as why the planning went up in revenue, the sustainability permit fee revenue was also moved over to planning and zoning since we're moving the Sustainability Coordinator expenses over there for wages. Any other questions?
Are we good to go? Move forward, Billy?
Okay. We can move on to the sewer fund. And really, those are just for informational purposes. We talked last time how we had adjustments to the PIF revenue, which is a good thing. So the sewer fund increased by $115,000, and they now show an increase in the fund balance by $141,000. Next, water fund. And that one really increased by a significant amount, $247,000, and is now showing an increase to the fund balance in the amount of $162,000 versus they were in the deficit prior to this increase. And that is really all for the water and sewer fund.
So there's always opportunities to cut more. This is, I think, what we came up with. If you guys would like to talk more, we're open for that, too. I did, I guess, in this process, what we'd like to do, we would still like to have that hearing on the 3rd, so we stay aligned. And I think that there, there was some questions in the last meeting also about the DDA budget. That is a question that I cannot answer. The DDA is its own entity, but there may be opportunities to consider what their budget, how their budget might be approved by the board. And I don't know if that's something that we want to discuss tonight, or if that's something that we could bring, I guess I'm not quite sure exactly what we're going to do with that. But I think for the most part, for the town budget line items, I think we're, if we go with the 50% contract, we're definitely achieving the budget deficit cut that we talked about. If we're going with 100%, there's a trade-off there, and you see the higher number, but it is still lower than what we had originally anticipated. And I think that the other thing, I guess, the last thing I'd leave you on, is that we're not sure, like we talked about before, whether this is a fiscal consideration that we need to make for several years, or if this is kind of a down part in our cycle. And so we really tried to design this budget in such a way that, that we do have some flexibility to not lose operational capacity. I guess the last thing I'd say, unemployment choices, I think that we would prefer to keep our staff how it is, although, with that being said, we may have people, you know, if people move on or change jobs or things like that, that's something that we would really interrogate next year. I don't want to say we'd be on a hiring freeze, but I will say that we will be really looking at our processes and procedures and staffing levels. And if that happens, it will be an opportunity just for us to think about what that looks like in the future. So I just wanted to kind of throw that out there. That would be part of our, our work next year.
More clarifying questions? Do you have more to present yet before, more clarifying questions?
So just to clarify, with the NDDA approval, that piece, the budget piece, yeah, was there any guidance or any thoughts on that? And I don't know if this is where you want to chime in, Jennifer?
Well, one thing that we had talked about offline was whether the DDA budget could be separated out from the Board of Trustees' budget. And yes, it absolutely can be separated out. The DDA is really its own entity, its own governmental entity, and it might be a good idea to move in that direction anyways, to have a separate budget, so there's, there's good transparency in terms of DDA's revenue and expenditures. And so that's also a separate process. With all of that said, you know, the goal is to get budgets approved by December 15th. If they're not approved by December 15th, then an automatic, the state has an automatic 90% of appropriations is, of what was for 2024 is fixed then for 2025. That becomes essentially their budget. That becomes essentially their budget. So whatever was appropriated in 2024, only 90% of that is appropriated then for 2025.
It applies to DDAs as well.
Yeah. Yeah.
And so the, the NDDA has the same deadline of that December 15th.
Yes. Yeah, they have. And they have, you know, you would want to separate out to the mill levy for the DDA. And think about too.
Clarifying question?
Go for it.
All right. With that, Jennifer, if their budget then is fixed at 90% of 2024 levels, is there something that precludes us from doing a supplemental budget for them or us in 2025? Say, okay, with 20, 90%, but now we're going to do a budget to do a different project.
Right. You could definitely do a supplemental budget for the NDDA. I mean, one thing to think about too, is what are you really approving for your revenue and appropriations for the DDA? Is it lower level items that aren't really called out in the appropriations? Or is it, you know, the specific items that you have questions about? I wasn't here at that meeting, so I'm not sure where the questions are.
Right. Yeah. I think our request, our desire would be that things were just more granular and then they broke down all these random thousands of dollars numbers that often seem rounded, you know? So it's, you know, we were just asking for clarity, but like, we don't necessarily want to hold up our whole budget process based on that. And that's why we're having this conversation. Like, can we sever them? So our budget can go through, what we know.
You can. Yes, you can.
I guess, can I ask?
Billy, Billy, this is Tanya. Did you ever get clarity from Kate regarding the budget with more details? That should be in this agenda if so, right?
Oh, you, oh, you mean more granular?
Questions that we had regarding the NDDA budget from the last meeting? Did those get forwarded to Kate for her to send back the answers as to like, why the website is 25,000? Like, why is beautification 80,000? Did we get any information from her?
On this packet, I don't see it.
John, did you get any? Did she just ignore it? Or was the message not relayed? I tried to tell her, but.
She was on the meeting. We haven't heard anything specific yet.
Okay. Well, I wrote her a specific email saying that the BOT wanted more details.
There is still time. We have up until the hearing to, you know, we can, we can get the clarity in that budget. And maybe that's really the answer here is that we need to really address that.
I have a question then. So it was my understanding that the NDDA is part of town. That's what it is for the audit. They have to be part of town. And so with my budget book, that's due by January 31, would I exclude the NDDA then?
You, you can include them. I mean, it's okay that they're part of your resolution approving the budget for town and then for the DDA, but you can also separate it out. So they can be part of your budget book.
Okay.
Because even if they, we don't hit the deadline of December 15th, it's still the 90% of the 2024, and that would still go through and a part of your budget book, correct?
So how would I then, would I have to rework all my numbers for the budget?
Yes. For the, for the NDDA.
For the DDA, for the DDA. Now, now we would move our budget through everything else and the DDA, we're just, we're just talking about this possibility when, when deciding on it. But, but if we feel like we want the granularity enough that we don't want to approve it as is, that then we, we kind of separate it. And then, yeah, I guess for sake of your budgeting within DDA numbers, that would have to be based on 90% of 2024.
Or they could do the work.
Or they could do the work. Yeah.
That seems like how that's supposed to be done. Yeah. I mean, yeah.
Can I ask that question? Just very bluntly, why wouldn't they do the work?
They don't.
I can, I'm.
Okay.
So, okay, basically we would then just take, just so I understand, since I'll probably do the work, take the 24 numbers that were in the budget and just take it times 90%.
Right. And then, I mean, it hasn't happened yet, but.
Right. Well, it sounds like.
Well, yeah. Don't, I mean, like John says, there's time.
Don't we have to vote on that as a board, as an action item? Like NDDA separately, do we reject that budget? And wouldn't that happen in that special meeting that, with the one agenda item?
No. What I think we should do as a recommendation, you are allowed to change the budget up until the budget hearing, essentially. We could bring forward, I can talk to Kate again, we, I did email her about some of the concerns we were having. I was concerned about the conversation we had last time because there are big questions about some of the numbers there, which I think maybe could be justified. Maybe she could write an aim or something as simple as that, that shows what her thinking is that would allow the board to approve that budget. But this could be, I suppose we could bring this forward in the hearing. It's just, what my concern is, is I really do not want the town budget to fail and us to end up in this 90% appropriation situation because we don't have this issue figured out. I'm also worried about one of the comments that was made during the last board meeting that we need to make sure that projects are coming forward appropriately to your body and to be approved. They're supposed to come by resolution. That's the other thing is that if that is happening properly, it gives you that control piece, but we need to make sure. That's why I think this work session is necessary because we need to just reestablish how all of these processes work. So I think like, if that is something that you guys would like to do, I can work with Kate as early as tomorrow, and maybe we could get some clarity around what we're talking about. I do not think the DDA can meet before that hearing though. So that's going to be the challenge.
And I, I just have to say too, that it always has been my understanding that the NDDA is supposed to come before you guys with any of their projects. So I don't know what happened this year. That is, I mean, that's a surprise.
So just throw it out there. So if that's the case, I'm just going to put out, so what would be the problem with just approving their budget? If they have to come back to us anyways.
Well, yeah, but they haven't this year is what I heard, right? They haven't come before you.
Yeah.
No.
So I guess it might be scary for you all to approve something, right?
And then not have.
Okay. I misunderstood. What, what I meant was like, we're approving these kind of random, you know, numbers that are at least multiples of 10,000 and, or multiples of 5,000. But, um, but they, they, I thought they had to bring it back later to us to be fine, to be approved as resolutions in 2025. So.
Right.
At that point, we'd see some numbers that don't have zeros all the way across the end, you know, like some real numbers.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying. That's what it's supposed to be, but I don't think this happened in 24.
Yeah. And so we weren't.
And that's maybe what we can talk to Kate about, why that hasn't happened.
Well, to your point, Billy. Oh, go ahead, Chris.
Sorry, I was gonna say, this is Chris. I mean, if we have some guarantee that in 25, you know, the DDA is going to work within its bylaws, then it doesn't really matter what we approve of their budget. We, you know, separating them out, you know, approving one, approving the town budget, absolutely. We have to do that. I don't want the town suffering the 90% cut. But if the DDA, if they can't get us legitimate answers by the budget, let's split them out and let's not do, you know, let's not let the, the state, you know, just kind of restrict them to 90%. Let's just ourselves give them a budget of, you know, $25,000 for 2025, knowing we're going to have a work session in early 25 where we can sit down with them and look at these projects and come up with a legitimate supplemental budget.
Yeah, that's another way too. Just to say, this is what we're.
That puts the effort on DDA and not onto town staff because the DDA, you know, like it was said just a minute ago, the DDA is not doing it. If you cut their budget to 25,000, so you're basically paying for their executive director, the DDA will have to do the work in order to do any projects in 2025.
Other option? Any concerns that, from your perspective and the work that you would do, Rita, any concerns with that?
Um, I, I'll have to think about it. There's a lot. I just know all the supplemental budgets fall on me as well, right? So.
Yeah. Like, I get there's a procedure problem with NDDA and that falls except on the executive director. Uh, but most of those projects that are in the budget are pretty tried and true. And if we just request, require the executive director to bring each item up to us before a check is written, like it was supposed to have happened last year, then again, I don't see what the problem is. I don't see why you'd want to handcuff the NDDA from moving forward with, for instance, the RFP for the public summer concert series, which people love so much. If they don't have the money for in January to hire somebody, it won't happen. So I don't know it, what we're trying to prove here. I understand there's a lack of procedure. That's on the executive director. And I can't believe she hasn't come forward with a detailed explanation of the budget after last meeting. And after I emailed her, and I assume John spoke to her as well. But that's another issue. But I just don't understand why you'd want to stall out like events that were really popular last year that might not happen over this little like quarrel we're having. I think we just need to speak with Kate and say, hey, none of this is going to happen if you don't bring it back to the BOT and a, and at least a consent agenda, but ideally in a action, you know? But if that's how you guys want to go, that's fine, but I would vote against that.
Tanya, I think you just raised a good point. On the meeting on the third, we do have, it's a full meeting. We could have a discussion item specifically about this potentially, even though we have the hearing that same night.
And we would have it.
Kate be there?
Can we do sequence? Just one second. Can we sequence it? We can sequence it. So we could have that before the budget.
The hearing typically, I, we just typically put the hearing.
We can, we can do what we want with this sequence. So yeah. So we, we would have that before the budget hearing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I would hope that our executive director for the NDDA would bring together an explanation and a detailed budget, a little more than just what she gave us, especially after all these meetings we've been having. But I am not for handcuffing them and not allowing any of these projects like that have been successful and that are about to occur, like the freaking wayfinding, which I was never been supportive, but nonetheless, they're putting out an RFP, they're actually finally doing something and they don't have the money. It's all for naught. So I'm not sure what our point is on that. But I, I also want to bring this back to why the, the aim on this. I feel like we're digressing.
So I, I, yeah, part of me feels like there's no harm in approving this if we're going to have work sessions with them, if we're going to work on fixing the bylaws in Q1, and then everything they do has to come back to us in resolution. Let's just pass the damn thing. And, and so they're able to function and then, but you know, that number's way higher than probably what they're going to spend, or at least we're going to need to see it detailed out to equal these, these numbers. And then that's what we're approving to actually spend money.
They, they, they project high and it hasn't happened really, but you know, it could. Obviously that's why they're budgeting high, but I can't remember the number. I think like it was, they only had spent 150,000 in projects so far in 24. I don't remember.
Yeah. Tanya said there last meeting that they do tend to budget high on purpose, but they don't mean it.
Which is also a problem though. I mean, that's a problem.
It, it is, but I, I don't see, I mean, go ahead, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I mean, it's a problem if they're saying this is what we want to appropriate for X, Y, and Z, and then it's a million dollar budget and now they're only spending 150,000.
It, it is a problem. I, I guess, you know, we're hoping that, you know, through this work session and new bylaws and just a lot of like, it's more structure going in that this, this the last kind of sloppy budget out of the DDA. And the thing is like, I guess Rita, you know, if you get these fine tuned numbers that never come up, you know, if they end up spending less than they budget for, is that problematic on, on your end? So it's not. So.
It's, it's, it's more about, hey, this is what we said that we were gonna do. These are the projects. And this is, this is not, this has been happening for a couple of years, like several years. Right? And so.
And I mean, the funds just get carried forward. I mean, that's not an issue.
But it's also like, hey, we have projects that need to get done. And I think having a discussion is probably still helpful because again, like, you know, I, I'll say it again, but there needs to be a focus on infrastructure. And I know that there's going to be arguments for like a beautification or murals. And I'm just saying, can we just hit pause? Can we just hit pause maybe one year? And let's focus on some of this infrastructure stuff that needs to get done.
I want, so if we're going to have a work session probably in Q1, you know, so after budget season, and we decide during the work session, like infrastructure and other priorities are really bigger priorities for the BOT and DDA, is that a whole accounting nightmare to go back and take all those zeros and move them into different gallons?
I mean, it is what it is. It's just a supplemental budget.
And, and can, you know, what can we do to have Kate do that work and not you? That's actually a question.
Well, you know, whatever. So if she does it, it'll then come to me, right? And then I have to do the supplemental budget. So it is what it is. It's fine.
I, I said this in an email a while ago, but if you want an infrastructure project done and you want them to pay for it, it's really helpful for town staff, be it streets or parks or somebody to come up with the project and say, this is what we need. This is how we're going to get it done. Cause not everybody on the DDA board is going to have the knowledge to make new sidewalks. Or it's usually a conjunction of like a grant and they come to the NDDA like, can you, can you provide the grant funding, the match for it? Can you do the 20%? But it usually comes from the BOT or parks or streets or another department that has an idea, has the ability to get it done, knows the grant, and then comes to the NDDA. There isn't anybody on the NDDA who currently, except for maybe Andrew, he's the only one who's like works in construction that, who, who has that kind of knowledge to put together a committee to make new sidewalks for the town and net. So if you guys want something done and you want the NDDA to pay for it, we have to make it happen or direct staff to do it. So I mean, at this point, they have their committees that are working pretty well, but they are really good for matching grants. So that's kind of what I wrote in an email earlier about, and I'm standing by it.
That's cool. I mean, they do have Everett now, and that would be something, he'd be a resource in that department. Um.
Yep. Yeah. Bring it to him. See what he's got.
I think it becomes clear, we just need to, you know, we pass something, whatever it is for this year's budget, and then we have this work session with the DDA where the board can direct the DDA in the direction we want. And then we have to rely on the liaison to actually keep the DDA and the BOT in sync as they come forward. And then we enforce the bylaws. So as they do move forward with projects, whether it's wayfinding, beautification, the summer series, the, each one of those large line items comes before the BOT for approval and funding.
That makes sense.
Well, it sounds like it would be a good idea, I guess, for the board to sit in with the NDDA when they go through budget season.
Yeah. I mean.
I mean, that sounds like the smart thing to do.
Yeah. I mean, I said in their last meeting, but yeah, I kind of wish I'd said in their last couple before that. Sounds like they were entertaining. So. Okay. Yeah. No, that makes, oh, and so if we were going to add something as a discussion item, do we even need to do that at this point? Or, you know, on the third, before the budget hearing?
If you.
Cause, cause Kate has two weeks to kind of bring us some more.
I will be talking to Kate either way. If you would like us to prepare an aim that she could make, show you how this is aligned to their plan of development and like kind of what the thinking was, I think that could be done. And it might be helpful to have it in the package just so you can read through it for your own knowledge. And then with the understanding that I think the leadership of the DDA and leadership of the BOT have the same goal that we want to.
I do too.
Build some consensus around process. And I think it's just a good time for that to happen right now. And that would be very early next year.
Does the DDA have lawyers on, like, do they have their own lawyer?
They do, but they're constrained and they're just, it's, it's, yes, they do.
I guess I was just asking because maybe it would be helpful to have the lawyers at the work session, just so that we're all clear on the, what the law says about the relationship between the two bodies, so that we're all on the same page and we're not just making assumptions of what.
There's two real big pieces here. There's the state statutes, and then there's the bylaws of the town. And we have identified that we want to look at those bylaws and work through them a little bit. And I think that's true for everyone. So I think that that's probably something that we should talk about. The DDA also, when I met with them, they also indicated they'd like to do that during a board meeting of yours or theirs, so that you're not adding an extra meeting to the schedule. If we could get that done in January, I think this is probably something we want to move up our priority list. I think it's pretty important.
I just wanted to ask Christopher Larson, what he had said, that the liaison is supposed to bring every item to, to, to the BOT with an aim. I, I would think that would be the executive director's position to do that.
I did not say that. I just.
I did not say that. I just.
He, he, go ahead, Chris.
I didn't say that. I said you need, the liaison needs to keep the board of trustees and the DDA in sync and keep both informed as what's going on on those boards.
I've been trying to do that. In fact, I wrote Kate a explicit email saying, we have questions about the budget. We have questions about the website and beautification. And I'm, I'm really saddened that there was not a revision to the budget about it.
What would be good is if we do, when we do have our work session, we'll, we'll, we'll agree to some priorities. And then you'll have just that list, you know, everyone will. And that will be much easier to hold everyone accountable to like a set list that everyone agreed to. So it won't be like trying to send little emails of every detail. You can just bring back people back to the agreed upon list of priorities. And that should be more straightforward.
Yeah, I think there's been a lack of communication because I think the NDDA thinks that only supplemental budgets come back to the BOT. That once you approve this budget, each thing doesn't come back to the BOT because it's been approved. So they can just work freely without having to bring it back and get delayed by, you know, the meeting schedule and whatnot. So I think you guys really mean, you guys, I would be like John and Billy speaking with Kate and clarifying that procedure because I really do think that only supplemental budgets have been coming to you guys for a while.
Thank you. Give me a moment to work on this. I will make, we're going to address this in a way that is, I think everybody wants the same thing here. We just need to make sure we're all connected correctly.
Yeah, I'm definitely much more optimistic about the DDA with new leadership. And it just seems like, yeah, having talked to Andrew that we definitely, I think have the same goals. Thank you. I have a question on the whole police thing. I know we talked about, you know, if the 50% was also part of that was like starting to rebuild a marsh, you know, starting to work on the hybrid. Where, where does that sit?
So we reached out to a couple of different sources. We looked at some of the funding it's required to hire a marshal. And then we also looked at our insurance costs that we're likely to incur along with the equipment costs that we need to take care of. And I think the big ones are car, radio for equipment. Insurance costs are probably 30 to 40% higher than what we are currently paying. So it's a significant cost. When we talked to SIRS about it, who's our, our insurance provider, they suggested that this is a possible path forward, but that doing it in a very short term period is not feasible or advisable. I think what we would want to do under that scenario is add this to the strategic goal plan for 2025 specifically. Work through the, one of the questions is that you have to very itemized budget for the insurance for them because there's just a lot of, of pieces there. So I think if we added this to 2025 budget, we could feasibly bring a marshal position forward in the 2026 budget for consideration.
That makes sense. What's SIRS a cost these days annually? Would you say ish, like 30, 40% more like what's more than what? Okay. So this budget doesn't have Miranda, but then I see in your recommendations, we recommend Miranda. And I think given the special, she hasn't utilized her whole budget. And you know, arguably she's not even billing us for the hour. She's working, um, are we talking, is this the place or is it next week that we talk about, you know, adding that back into the budget?
We would love to have that feedback. And I think if we did that the other, to your point, we wouldn't intend to use that whole fee. It would just give us a, a pot of money to draw from if we need her.
Yeah, it's kind of a not to exceed her, you know?
Okay, I'm ready.
Thanks.
So for workman's comp, that is increasing from 30,000 to 42,000 in 25. That's workman's comp.
Annually.
Yes. And then the property liability insurance is only going up 3,000. However, it's going up from 500 to 5,000 for out of pocket, the deductible. That's the biggie.
And, oh, so that's, so what's the big, and that's without the marshal. Where was the marshal?
That has nothing to do with the marshal.
Okay. So the marshal's office would drive us up from 30, 40% above 42,000 basically. So another 14,000.
That's like the guesstimate. And then salary wise, it sounds like marshals these days are making between 130, 160. But that being said, I still think we could put together those numbers. We just need, we need to make sure we get all this stuff right.
Yeah. I mean, when we talked about a couple of weeks ago, we said, you know, like likely or last week, you know, likely we would, you know, there'd be no money getting shelled out for payroll for until at least six months. But maybe just next year is a better way to do it altogether.
We could probably bring this forward to you relatively quickly and not, we should be doing supplemental budgets willy nilly. But if it, if it becomes feasible and we find that path, we could do that. So we could get that hiring to happen. I think we could get that, we, we could get that analysis done at least fairly quickly. Well, in a couple of months, I think.
So I'm just kind of back of the map, back of the napkin math. We're probably looking at, you know, something around $200,000 budget for a marshal with salary and insurance.
Yeah, well, vehicle, I think a police vehicle would be like 70,000 or so.
We didn't already have a.
We have a Tahoe, but it's, I'm not sure it could, we have to do some investigations. But if we, I think worst case 70,000 on a vehicle. And then we'd have to buy a radio, radio is about $8,000. And then there'd be some, there's, there's some other costs that we, we need to talk to somebody who knows exactly all the costs that we need to understand.
Just kind of back of napkin kind of thing.
I do have a comment on that. Troy did look into that a little bit. So it would be about 90,000 per vehicle that would come with the radios and stuff. So.
So 300,000. But we're looking at, so if we, if we go to 50% coverage with Boulder County sheriffs, we're cutting 200 ish, $1,000. So we can at least very roughly look at that as a trade of, you know, even if we don't hire a marshal for whatever reason, right off the bat, like that's sort of our budget for a marshal is what we cut from going to 50%.
168,000 difference, you mean?
Yeah. Is, is.
It's 168,000 between the two, yes.
Okay. So not quite. Okay.
Well, I mean, you have a point though, that it's getting close to that. And then next year they're going to raise the rates again. So then, you know, what we'd save on that would go towards the vehicle and this, that and the other, and hiring more staff. I think it's worth pursuing. I don't think, you know, I agree that we don't need to put it in today's budget, but I would love to see those numbers later in the year.
Me too.
So ultimately you also probably want to see what we're leaning towards the 100% or the 50%?
Yeah. And that is an answer. We actually need to get back to BCSO right now, I think.
Is Jennifer Mendez still on? I know she was earlier.
Yeah, I've been on this whole time.
Oh, nice.
Thank you.
Of course.
Um, do you have anything to input here as we're in this stage?
Um, no, I don't think so. I, I think I had talked to DC ulcers and the reason why we're sort of pushing for a decision, whether it's 100 or 50% is because they are in the process of setting up our deputies for their shift assignments. And we're also trying to figure out numbers on our end because they're getting ready to start those guys for bids and have them start planning for the 2025 year and their districts. So that's the reason why we're doing a push to be able to figure out what contracts so we could just kind of start seeing positions for the deputies.
And if we, if we, if we double the extra duty as we're talking about for this budget, does that put additional burden on, on you to manage that or are those guys?
No. Sorry about that.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
No. So I actually ended up having a meeting with Jonathan and Rita and we had talked to about, I had contacted the extra duty, Carla and doubling it to 16 days a month for the extra duty. And she said that from just her experience and what she's feeling right now, she wouldn't have an issue or a problem filling those positions. So no, it wouldn't be anything extra. And then again, I did hear you guys mention if you wanted to increase that or reduce that, you can do that. That's not anything that's extra or anything that would be a burden on Carla.
But again, just the reality is that if it's not filled, we just, we don't have those folks. It's not a guarantee.
Correct. Correct.
And you wouldn't have the expense.
And I had asked her kind of in terms of it being, coming into winter months, would that change anything? She said no. She had just recently put out for the seven days currently. And she said that everyone picked those up very quickly. And she said on a regular basis, anytime she's ever put out the traffic extra duty for Netherlands, people pick them up very quickly, especially now with them coming up and doing the Eldora extra duty, they will pick up the Eldora extra duty and then they'll pick up the net traffic extra duty. And then obviously you're sharing that cost in terms of the drive time with Eldora and then with you all.
Are, are we at risk in any way of being in the position where we were last year? Where we were paying for officers that were in training but weren't actually here? I think we're all like, there's no, we're covered on that completely.
Supposedly we're past that.
Okay.
Are we past that Jennifer Mendez? Cause do we?
I mean, like if somebody, if somebody were to, you know, change jobs or switch, like would we be back in a position where we'd have to be waiting for somebody to get trained up even at 50%?
No, the contract currently are, no, it won't affect that. Whatever, whatever contract you guys go with, that is going to be what we're going to fulfill. So no, it's not going to be with the, anyone in training or new deputies or anything like that.
Cool. Awesome. Thank you so much.
Of course.
And then Jennifer, just to be clear, just one more question. I think this has already been covered, but I want to make sure that I understand it correctly. The extra duty traffic, so if they're the only officers here, but a call does come in for some other kind of report, they can leave kind of traffic duty and go to that issue and respond. Is that right?
Yeah, as long as we're, those would be like high priority calls. Obviously if it's a low priority call that Jonathan kind of talked about, we would end up having the mountain deputy or another flats deputy come up and handle that because that wouldn't be a high priority call. But if it's something that's an in progress weapons call, a domestic, things of that nature, yes, that deputy will come off of that, that traffic extra duty and go handle that call. And some of the numbers that I've sent in the past to Jonathan and Rita actually identifies that where they had signed up for maybe four hours of traffic extra duty. And then they ended up coming off of that. So they didn't end up doing traffic tickets during that time, but they may have been handling a pretty major accident in the town. So therefore what you're exchanging is not the traffic extra duty, but they are handling these priority one, two, three calls.
Got it. Thank you so much.
You bet.
Any more questions around BCSO? So I have one more thing. So we, this budget has Nikki's fourth employee in there. And we did, there have been some preliminary talks or at least requests with DDA last week. Where does that sit or are we, that's still going to be just a process, right?
Yeah, they need to have more conversation with the board.
Seemed like there was general sentiment in favor of it, but by no means unanimous.
They said they were open to it. They just, I think they're wanting to have this, this joint work session with you.
Also to, to be clear on that, it's, it's my third employee. So it's four employees total in parks. And.
Yeah, thanks.
The NDDA funded last, this past summer funded two part-time employees that we become a full-time employee.
Oh, as well. I, I thought the idea was to use that money to, I didn't hear that. I heard.
It was the, sorry, there might've been.
Not as well.
It was the, it was to, we were trying to see if the DDA would be willing to help sponsor that employee that you're.
And it was more like the value of one person who's trained well, who works year round, probably can do way more work than two part timers would anyways. Yeah, I mean, probably if you think about, given last year's experience. Yeah. Anyways, that, that's how I heard it was like in lieu of, you know, switching out.
Yeah, it's, the two part timers did a lot of work. But to lose the two part times in order to fund a full-time employee, I'll still be shorthanded this.
And I guess if the NDDA does end up saying they're going to support it, that will just offset the budget, right? If you guys decided that, decide that during 2025, then that will just improve that.
Yeah. So we budget for it and then if they pay for it.
We're not budgeting for it, right? That, that the NDDA will pay for it, but then it will just offset our expenses. So yes. There's hope.
Any other clarifying questions? Actually, we haven't gone to public comment. There's no one in the room. Folks online, do you have any public comment on this budget? These budget, these ideas around the budget? Okay.
Sorry.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
I was trying to unmute. No, I just wanted to speak, you know, for myself and chair as well as DDA. But that I think, you know, we, we definitely are all looking forward to a work session and getting clarity on some bylaws as well as, you know, looking at helping the executive director put some systems in place or get her some help administratively and accounting wise. So, but to echo Tanya's point, you know, I think having, having some, getting some help on, on the grants and getting the priorities is, is definitely, you know, conversations I'd like to have. So appreciate the dialogue and was glad, glad to hear everything.
Thanks, Andrew. Any more public comments from folks online? Okay. If not, we'll bring it back here. And any more closing comments or questions from the board?
Well, we, I think we have to give some direction on some things.
We do actually. We have some specific questions before the board. Here's a second. It is. So questions. Well, not seeing it written out super clean. So. Oh, there we go. It's yes, it's not the end of it. So does one of the proposed alternatives meet the board's expectations? And would the board like to consider further cuts or changes to the 2025 budget? So I think, you know, alternative wise, we probably should get a, get a, you know, go around the room and ask for folks to sit with the 50% versus 100%. So we'll do that. Do you need?
Jumping right in. At the last meeting, I was really reluctant to, to support going down to 50%, but kind of sitting with the reality of the budget and the deficit and just thinking about it more and knowing that we would potentially be increasing extra duty traffic. I think I'm, I'm leaning more towards that option, especially given that it's the recommendation of staff as well. If I'm reading this correctly, right? Yeah, great. So I think that's where I'd, I'd start. I don't think I'd, I don't think that it seems like there's any other cuts or changes that could be made to the budget with still doing everything town staff needs to do. So I think I'd, I'd support going down to 50% and increasing the extra duty traffic, knowing that they can respond to calls as needed, priority calls as needed. And that's kind of where I'm starting at.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would agree. I'm willing to consider that 50% with the fact that it's double extra duty. I think that's a nice compromise. It's a way to get some coverage without busting the, you know, through the, the budget continuously. So, and I would agree. I think at this time, you guys are great. Well done. I mean, we set you out on a task. I mean, to go from 568 to where we are now is incredible. And so just well done. So yeah, I would agree. That's, that's where I'm sitting.
I am too. 50% and it seems like the way to go. You know, that's just brings our budget to a better place. I mean, that's kind of what I've been voting for the whole time. Every time I've had a chance to vote on it and um, as much as I'm not crazy about extra duty traffic, I think what it does do doubling is it fills in the potential gap that people, that people who are really wanting the 100% coverage are going to feel better about because they'll respond immediately to urgent calls. So, I like it.
You know, and I could mimic what you guys have said because I totally agree with you and great job. There's definitely, you know, I don't see really anything else that you can pull from that. I'm uh, I'm comfortable with 50% and extra duty.
Yeah, I'm kind of with Tierney. I, I was pretty reluctant in the last meeting going down. I felt like it just the value proposition wasn't there. Um, but yeah, kind of based on the reality, looking at the budget and yeah, and feeling like if we have extra duty guys up here more often, that helps us with the, you know, crisis coverage and, you know, we really need to set ourselves up on a, you know, a good foot as we go into 25. So um, hopefully it's not the long-term solution, but um, yeah, I'm in favor as we try and find the, the Band-Aid bridge solution.
Tanya and Chris?
I'm in favor of 50%, um, especially if we keep researching, come to, to the board in three, four months with some ideas for our own marshal and, and moving out of BBS, BVSD, BCSO. Uh, only, not because I'm dissatisfied with BCSO. I thought it was the best choice, but because of the incremental costs that feels like we're without any say in. Um, I actually wished, wish we could keep BCSO because having our own department is a lot of work uh, for us, but I think that's where we have to go eventually. And this is the only way we could afford to do it. And it's either this or we cut other staff. So I think this is a good choice for now.
Thanks, Tanya.
Chris?
Well, not going to come as any great surprise because I'm in agreement with everyone. You know, the 50% is, you know, if you're, if you're the only obvious way forward. Uh, kudos to town staff, like everyone else said of, you know, getting us to this number. Um, the one thing, you know, it's, well, there's two things. One, like Tanya said, you know, I think we really need to take this next year, you know, really the next nine months to figure out our path forward with the mar, with our own department or in our own marshal or whatever that creative solution is. And I think there are some out there. So I would think that that needs to become a high priority for the BOT in the coming, you know, first part of the first quarter of the year to really you know, work that issue and try to figure it out. And then the second piece is, and the one piece that makes me most nervous about this proposal is the sort of the cuts and delays to the Big Springs Egress because that is something we've been talking about and trying to work on for a long time. So I think with the plan that's here though, to identify the high priority route and continue moving on that, get that designed so that we can get that out for bid and try and figure out how to actually finally get that built. Um, I think that is a solution that works within our budget and within our, you know, the needs of the community. And I think it's just, again, it's going to be a piece that isn't coming upon the BOT to really help push forward and keep sort of a focus on in the coming year to make sure that we keep moving forward and don't let that linger another year. So that's that.
All about strategic goals. We'll have to make sure we pencil these things or pen these things in so we stay focused on them.
Yeah, totally. Thanks, Chris. And um, yeah, it seems like part of this would be picking one of the routes for, and designing it. Um, yeah, and I do want to reiterate what trustee Corvlin says about, yeah, I will look forward to seeing just the beginning of our planning for, you know, our marshal's office this year. So, um, that is that question. And then um, uh, does, does the board support attempting to phase the project to reduce the 2025 match to 23,000? I think, can we just get a nod?
To 73,000?
Yeah.
The Big Springs?
I'm kind of reading three things at once. Yeah, 20 to 73,000. Yeah.
And I, I would say yes, also submit um,
Oh, yeah.
the official request to FEMA is a part of that direction, correct?
Yeah. So I'm asking for a nod on um, just budgeting for the match for one design at 73,000 this year, but also reaching out to FEMA uh, to see um, if we can extend.
But then also if we can be shovel ready or we can start to execute on one route while we're working on the second um, proposal.
That's the other.
Or design.
That's the other FEMA. That's a FEMA question, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nod.
I'm nodding.
Nod.
Nod.
I jumped the gun with my first con, last comment. So clearly nodding to this one too.
Okay, yeah, you did cover it. Thank you. Um, NDDA partnerships, does the board support continuing discussions with the NDDA to explore shared cause for the visitor center and park staffing?
Yes.
Nod.
Tanya and Chris?
Yes, yes, I like that.
Great, thanks.
I'd, I'd also throw in there just also explore some of John's, you know, creative ideas for other ways we can increase, you know, revenues out of the visitor center, whether that's a vending machine or, you know, just other creative solutions.
Yeah, and you seevers, I mean, you saw her comments, but she, she's like willing to take on some manager, you know, active role. So that was good to read.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's no shortage of people in this community who would be great at helping out there. So.
Great. And so um, next one, should the donation to the food pantry remain at 9,000 or go to back down to 7,500? I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to nod for 9,000.
9,000.
Tanya and Chris?
Agreed.
And last one, should funding for Miranda's support, especially with the um, um, what do you call it, grants be included in the 2025 budget? And I'm gonna, I'm gonna nod a yes for that myself, given that she's done a good job of keeping below her budget.
Do we think that you'll need her?
Yes.
For the grant, for the grant handling.
Yeah, there's one other legal issue that is, it would be helpful to have her here if we need her potentially.
If not too.
And, okay, and so we'd be going up by 4,000.
I do not think we would use that. We could reduce that number potentially. I don't think we need that much support.
Okay. So even if we have to, we'd be at 260, 260,000 is a deficit.
Go up $4,200.
Yeah. So, okay.
Can I get a nod on that?
Nod.
Nod.
Nods for sure.
Great. Thank you. Um, budget hearing will be in two weeks. Hopefully they'll give Kate some time to do something for the DDA's budget clarity. We'll have a special meeting in three weeks. All virtual, one action item, so it's likely a short meeting to approve the budget. Um, we already gave you a nod to, to reach out to FEMA. The work session, we're going to try to coordinate that in Q1. As you heard, Andrew, he's on board with it. And then, you know, it's just really talking about the engineer with the budget. Any?
One clarifying question on the parks position, you're comfortable with us leaving it in the budget as currently budgeted, and then we'd work with the DDA to see if we can figure that out.
Yes.
Yes.
I guess we didn't see that question. Yep.
Nikki, does that, does that work for you?
No, she'll still be short a person.
Nope, she'll be short two part-timers in the summer, but.
Well, one full-time employee.
No, she won't be.
No, that's not true.
No, she won't be. She'll have.
It's two part-time that equate to one full-time.
No, the bu, the budget is, is her original full-time staff of Nikki plus three workers.
Currently those.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's the same.
But.
No.
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 We're asking.
To pay for the deep, to pay for the full-time.
I think we're saying the same thing.
Yes.
Okay, but essentially there's the two part-time, we're asking the NDDA to do the, what is the fourth hire? Right? And that fourth hire, so you, you would not have the two part-time people.
Well, originally we were worried we weren't going to be able to fund this position. And so we're asking the DDA to fund the third position potentially. But the other, we could have a further conversation with them and just see if the two part, because they're, they're in this budget, they contemplate two part-time people. So at this point, you would be able, if we approve the budget as it is, you would be able to hire your new person plus you'd have those part-times. But what the conversation was, would they be willing to support your staff moving forward since there's a big portion of the work that happens in the DDA? And so we could, I guess what I'm saying is there may be alternatives that we could bring forward that might meet all the goals we just discussed.
But at a minimum, we'd be asking them to support that full-time position.
Yeah.
Right.
But I mean, like, so, but we're, we're budgeted that Nikki gets to hire somebody, her, a replacement person for the her current staff, currently budgeted and still have budget for two part-timers.
No.
Yeah, that's what's in the budget.
Yeah, that is correct.
Anyway, has the two part-timers.
Presently, that is correct.
And then we're making a recommendation to work with the DDA to help offset the cost of either a fourth employee or the two part-timers, right?
They already have the two part-timers in their budget. It would be a supplemental budget on the NDDA to cover the, whatever it is, 60,000.
It's really all we talked to them in, in the meet, or not we, I was listening. It, we, all that Tanya talked to him about was covering, you know, like basically Brian's position, the four, the fourth full-time person that works in the department, you know, Nikki's third of three. Um, then we're going to ask them to cover that. The conversation's kind of was basically in lieu of the part-timers and maybe they would do it all because the part-timers are pretty cheap. The other flip thing is that we pay for the part-timers and they pay the full-timer. Maybe that's just an idea.
Either way, like in the bu, in the budget as it is, we've got a, a replacement Brian and two part-timers.
As it is, there's no change in personnel.
Okay.
Right, so basically I have budgeted 45,000. Let's just say give or take for that position for Nikki. If you guys decide with the board next year that with the NDDA board that they'll cover it, it'll just be $45,000 that we will not have to spend.
Plus burden.
But it was budgeted.
Plus burden, 68,000. Plus burden.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
So it equates to 68,000 about is I think what we talked about last time.
Yeah. So, so really.
Including insurance, you're right.
Yeah.
That is correct.
We're just, we're just trying to get the.
But they probably wouldn't cover insurance, right? I mean, the, we're just talking wages right now.
But even if they split, I mean, if they split it with us, even that helps.
Sure, anything would help.
We're just trying to get extra help there to cover something that's already in our budget.
That's correct.
Perfect. Yeah. So all it's going to do is reduce that. So if we're sitting at 260, let's say, any additional help, whether it's from the visitor center or it's from that um, role just reduces that even further.
So does that mean you can hire? That's I guess what you're wanting, right?
She does have money in this year's budget for that.
Obviously.
Right.
It was just, we didn't want to hire if we're letting him go in January.
If you're going to let him go in a couple of months.
And, and do you, do you need any more direction from us on budget tonight?
Um, Rita's just telling me one thing. I'm just bringing this up for information purposes. There has been a long-term plan to switch the VoIP system of the town to a new system that's more modern and cheaper.
What's VoIP again?
VoIP is a voice over IP, so it's just a new phone system they use. And one of the things this new system allows us to do is have people, if we have a snowstorm, they can still operate whole system from wherever they get stuck. So it's kind of a cool thing, but long-term, what happened is we thought our cost was going from like $21,000 for phones right now to $12,000. That's accurate. But when we did our investigation, we discovered that some of our critical systems are not able to switch onto this VoIP system yet. So we will have to carry sentry link on, and this is things like elevators and like gas meters and things like that, that are just critical infrastructure. There likely is a path to switch them, but it's not immediate. And so we are going to have to carry sentry link a little bit next year. Rita, correct me if I'm wrong. I think the number that you have is nine, 9,000?
I think it'll increase the budget in the general fund about 6,000. It's an overall, it's a 10,000 increase, but it's split between community centers, sewer and water. So we just found that out.
Yeah. But the intention would be to get rid of that, that.
Yeah, they're going to work really, our IT company told me today, they're going to work really hard to try to get all these other lines that are not critical away from there, but there's just not enough time right now to do that. So just so, you know, the budget might go up a little bit more.
Okay. Anything else?
Uh, no, but uh, where are the elevators that we have?
It's just the one here.
The one, yeah.
Oh, the community.
I guess the only other question would be, it sounds like you guys had some consensus that we don't separate the DD out, but work on our, our rules of procedure instead. I just want to make sure we have that direction for the hearing.
Rules of procedure, you seem like you went somewhere else. Oh, yeah, yeah. By, bylaws, yeah, they're rules of procedure. We need to work on ours too, but this, that's coming in January.
The budget here, that's where I'm going to get really into every fund again for the public and very detailed. So um, I will obviously talk about the NDDA budget like I had in the past. And if Kate's here, you know, she can chime in, but just so we have direction that that's what we want to do, bring back the NDDA budget as part of it.
The answer, yeah, I mean, I'd be nodding on that if it's possible to have, you know, her explanation, all of that as a part of it, super helpful.
We'll get that done.
Yeah, it'd be, yeah, to have it at the budget or before, at or by the budget hearing would be great.
And a very strong understanding that, I mean, it's, it has to come before us before, you know, for approval of those funds. No more.
That sounds good. We can bring all these forward to you. So at this point, do you have any other questions or things you'd like us to do before the budget hearing on the third?
I'd like to see Rita do a happy dance.
She'll do it on the 11th.
We're going to strongly encourage Rita to have some good PTO time coming. So I've been trying to talk her into it.
Awesome. Now, now there, anything else? No other questions?
Great. Thank you. With that, we'll move into our um, third discussion item. And just so you guys know, I have to get to the airport. I fly out early anymore and so I'm, I'm leaving. I may attend for some of this remotely. I may not, but Mayor Protem Sterling will take over.
All right. And with that, we are on to, I believe, let's see, Macy and Jennifer are going to talk to us about amendments to chapter six.
All right, so um, this is specifically amendments to chapter six in Netherlands municipal code. We realize that a bigger audit is coming, but there are amendments specific to chapter six that are important to address upon the start of a new fiscal year. So specifically, uh, let me see what's, it's section six dash four. There's a mention of a specific, yes, of a specific $20 late fee within code which is a discrepancy with our adopted fee schedule. So it's our recommendation that that $20 fee is scratched and that the language is replaced with just a fee set forth in the town's fee schedule so that we can update our fee schedules and not have to always update our code. So in addition to that change, there's a few others. Um, we have updated ordinance eight 70 and chapter six so that it is in compliance with Senate Bill 2022 032. Jennifer can expand on that if you guys have questions. Um, we have also specified a specific article for contractor licensing. And then we would like recommendations on sidewalk display, peddlers licensing and explosives. So just a little background on this, the last time that chapter six was amended was 2011 on February 1st by ordinance six eight nine, which is also attached. And um, moving into financial considerations. So just a little, this is, this whole, all of these amendments to chapter six are important, but just going back to this late fee discrepancy, um, as of June 2022. but just going back to this late fee discrepancy, as of June 2024, we have only been collecting a $20 late fee for business license renewal as cited in code. We have performed an audit, and we are providing about $620 in refunds to 19 businesses who paid more than the $20 late fee cited in Chapter 6. So the second quarter commenced at the end of September of 2024, and at that time, there were 30 businesses who were late in submitting their renewal application. So the questions before you tonight are, do you support the suggested amendments to Netherlands municipal code regarding Chapter 6? And are there any additional amendments that you would like to make to Chapter 6?
Thank you, Macy.
I have, oh, go ahead.
Yeah, no, if you have a clarifying question, go for it.
Yeah, don't we already have the contractor fee in the fee schedule? You're just trying to add it into the language of the ordinance, is that?
That's correct, yes.
Oh, okay, I get it then. So we, we've been charging it, so it's not a difference in the fee schedule, it's a difference in the wording of the ordinance?
That's correct.
Gotcha, okay.
Okay. Attorney Mattson, anything you wanted to add? Anything prevalent?
I'm happy to answer questions, but nothing to add.
Okay, great. Any questions? Any clarifying questions from the trustees? All right, with that, we'll move to public comment. Not seeing anyone in the room, so we will go to online. Anybody online who'd like to have a public comment? All right, going once. Going twice. All right, we will bring it back to the board for discussion and a motion.
It's, it's direction.
Oh, that's right.
This is discussion, so we'll bring it back on December 3rd for action.
Got it. Just ready to get this thing through. It's like.
You could move it if you wanted to, I guess, to action.
Is there really anything here that we need? I mean, to, I mean, that, sorry. I don't mean to be presumptuous, but at the same time, I was like, this seems like it's kind of a no-brainer, but maybe I'm wrong. Would you like it to be actified?
I don't mind.
The only, the only thing is you're missing, you know, transparency in that it's a discussion and it's, it would be moved to action. However, it doesn't seem like anybody is concerned about this ordinance. You didn't have anybody write in about it, no public comment.
Okay, got it. Chris, Tanya, any other suggestions?
Put in the consent agenda on the next meeting, maybe.
You can't, you can't put it on the consent agenda for next, for the next meeting?
It has to be next.
Yeah, ordinances that pass, they wouldn't, you, you can't have them on consent agenda for approval, so.
Got you.
Um, I'm gonna.
I think we just.
Go ahead, Chris.
Sorry, go ahead. I was just gonna say, I think we just put it on, you know, quick action item on the next meeting, but I could be convinced to just move it to an action item tonight. I don't feel strongly one way or another.
I'll just say one question. Do you foresee like that the local contractors, you know, might actually care about this, and either they're waiting for an action item or they just didn't notice it, and they might have comments?
No, I don't foresee that.
I mean, they're already getting charged. There's already the $100 fee in the fee schedule. It's already a requirement for them to get a license.
All right, well, I'm feeling a little spicy tonight. I make a motion to move this to an action item.
I'll second. Ready for me? Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Maris?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Ty?
Absent at the moment.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
It's okay, we all didn't realize. We're like, hey, where is that guy?
But I'm still here, so I could vote, even though I haven't said much. I've been totally engaged, and Ty's back anyway.
Okay. We'll let him sit down and move to Mayor Protem Sterling.
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yeah.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
And Trustee Ty, we're voting on moving Ordinance 870 to an action item this evening.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Motion is approved.
Okay, so now that it's an action item, I move to approve Ordinance 870. Sorry, is that what you said?
Correct, yes.
My gosh, okay, I move to approve Ordinance 870, making the changes to municipal code, Chapter 6.
Second.
Great, thank you. Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Trustee Maris?
Yes.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Billy?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yes.
And Mayor Protem Sterling?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The motion's approved.
All right, next one, 7.4, transitioning water meter infrastructure. Gonna turn it over to the infamous Andrew Bliss.
All right, it's gonna be the Eldora Resort of water meters. Are you ready? I'm just kidding.
Sponsored by.
Yes.
I have a little decal on each of my meters under, in my crawl space.
Just kidding. Okay, so the, the problem is, is we install water meters and meter radios that don't last as long as we should. It's, it's basically the same technology that the town has been installing since 2000, I think around 2012, when the town received a grant to install meter infrastructure. The company was previously Datamatic, it's now Zenner. And the, the problem is that we're replacing water meters and meter radios more than we should, or any, any utility should. And so tonight, we're looking for your direction on moving to a new brand and technology. This will be using funds that we budgeted for this year and for next year, so I don't think there's necessarily an action item. It's just an important technology change, so we just wanted to, to bring a value. For feedback, in the industry, there's three major water meter brands. It's Census, Zenner, and Badger. Anyone that's been in the industry for a long time will tell you that you really can't go wrong with those brands. And so those, we worked with those three companies to get bids. Neptune recently switched local distributors, and they've, I think they've struggled in that transition, and they've, their service has really dropped off. And so we've kind of dropped, dropped them because they weren't really being responsive to us through the, the procurement process. Census has the best warranties, but they're also the most expensive, and they require more upfront infrastructure. You have to build radio towers on day one to be able to read meter, meters remotely, day one. So the third option is Badger. Badger's not the cheapest, it's not the most expensive, but their meter, meters communicate via cellular communications, so it doesn't require the town to build radio towers. And so based on that, and the fact that many communities nearby, including Denver Water, Silverthorne, Aurora, Boulder, Broomfield, Greeley, and Morningmore, install Badger meters and are happy with them, I even went out to Silverthorne to check out their installations, because they're switching from Zenner to Badger radios, and learn more about the process. So based on that, our recommendation is to move to Badger radios moving forward. And another thing we checked on is that our billing system will be able to handle billing from Zenner and Badger throughout this transition, and so we're recommending moving to Badger and doing it as a transition, so replacing meters at 100 meters per year. And I included attachment of kind of what those costs might look like 10 years into the future. And while Zenner's the cheapest, it, it takes up, we didn't account for staff time, it takes some more staff time replacing equipment that doesn't last as long. It's a disturbance to customers because we have to go into their homes to replace these. We recently replaced Mayor Billy's, so he understands that. And I think, you know, if you have meters that aren't lasting as long as you should, you're more likely to have meters that don't provide a reading, and then you start losing customer trust.
Is, is that a climate thing, like why they're going bad so quick?
It could be, yeah. We have, we have a bad climate for batteries. It's, the problem is their batteries. But Zenner's cheaper for a reason, and I think it's just they don't use the same quality of materials, and they have a reputation, at least in Colorado, of just being a cheaper option that doesn't last as long.
Okay. Thank you.
So, yeah, so I think the question before is, you know, does the board support moving to a new, new technology?
Any other clarifying questions for Andrew? Okay. It's like you're contemplating, Luke. You're over it, okay. All right, well, then we're just gonna move to public comment. Not seeing anyone in the room? So we'll go online? And that's gonna be a negative. All right, so bringing it back. Any comments, further questions, snide remarks?
How many total water meters are there in Netherlands, and then how many years does it take you to replace them all?
About 900. Did you know it off the top of your head?
I was just gonna like Jeopardy buzz you.
I think it's 800, 870 plus right now, 871.
So, so, yeah, our town, and by the time you get to eight years down the road, there's probably another couple, so a 10-year timeline's pretty realistic.
Yeah, so we're, we're projecting 100 meters per year right now, which is something we did last year, and we're well on track to do this year. So it's a realistic goal.
My thought is, you're very well versed in this. If this is your recommendation, you have my support.
Thanks, I, I really appreciate that. That means a lot, but, but I really, I think you can't go wrong with any of these, so. But I appreciate that, thank you.
Yep. So I say, go for it.
Did you get public comment?
Nod.
Nod for me.
You have my sword.
Ditto.
Thank you.
Uh, Tanya or Chris online?
Yeah, it's fine, I'm.
I agree with you.
Okay, great.
Yep, trust Andrew.
Yep, all right, you have your direction. Mush?
Appreciate it, thank you.
Carry forth. Excellent.
Thanks, Andrew.
All right, now we are on to public comment on non-agenda items. Nobody in the room again? Anybody online? Seeing none, going to number nine, other business? Any other business? Okey-dokey.
Motion to adjourn.
There we go.
Second.
Safe travels, Mayor Billy.
Looks like he's hanging around to vote to adjourn.
Yeah, sorry. That was Trustee Miller who made the motion, and who was the second?
Yeah.
Me.
Ty, thank you. Okay. Mayor Billy, yes, he's leaving the meeting.
He's like out, he's like, see you.
Trustee Miller?
Yes.
Trustee Corvalon?
Yeah.
Trustee Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sterling?
Please.
Trustee Maris?
Yes.
And Trustee Larson.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah.
Good night.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned at 9:44 PM. Thank you.
Bye, everybody.